Thank you, Betsy. But before we get started, we have some very exciting council news. And that's our council has grown a little bit from the Taylor family. We have a baby girl, Charlotte Pan, and I understand everybody is healthy and home and happy with the night. That's all right.
Yes.
That's a miracle in itself.
Congratulations.
So that's wonderful news. And she's got two older brothers to look after her.
Yes, with one has a birthday today. Caleb's six. So thank you vice mayor.
Wonderful news. We're so happy for the Taylor family.
Congratulations Scott, well, let's see you and your growing family.
Thank you mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think the reason the mayor might have been running late, he had to find a parking space.
There's no parking. That's out here in the distance. Is everybody in here?
No, my one perk is I get a parking space. That is the perk. Okay, I guess we're called to order and thank you all so much for coming. Okay, first thing I gotta do a necessary read here. In accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code, section 2 dash 21, and by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council on Tuesday, June 13th, 2023, for the conclusion of the open meeting agenda items. The City Council Compris Room 2034, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd floor, 2401, Courthouse Drive. A formal session is already part of the regularly scheduled meeting. That has a formal session is limited to be for consideration for the candidates for the appointment or boards of commissions. The purpose of the special formal session is to allow City Council to convene into a closed session to discuss performance of its appointees and their compensation pursuant to Virginia Beach Code 2 dash 371181, evaluation of performances, compensation of city appointees. At the conclusion of the city closed session, the council will reconvene to an open session for the purposes certifying the closed session. No appointments will be formally made at this meeting. Sincerely, Bobby Dyer. Okay, so thank you. And at this point, I think we're ready for the city manager's briefing.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, at your previous winter retreat, council asked staff to prepare a presentation after the budget about the collective bargaining laws that were passed by the Commonwealth in 2021. Today, we hope to achieve that goal in educating council and informing them on some of the requirements and some of the nuances of that law. And we hope to get a robust discussion from council and also some feedback regarding any next steps that council would like us to take. At this time, Stacy Hawes will give a presentation regarding the collective bargaining standards and statutes in Virginia. And also, I apologize as well, Monica Copan, the co-director as well.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you so much, members of council, city manager, and staff. Thank you for having us today. The information that you're going to see today is very similar to what you saw in September of 21. For those of you that weren't members of council yet, our goal today is to provide some of the backstory about the laws and the change, how it impacts our organization, and then to provide some additional information for your consideration with regard to where do we go from here. Shelley, can you hit the thing because my button is not cooperating? All righty. So in 2021, the General Assembly amended the Virginia State Code to permit collective bargaining in the Commonwealth. And prior to that, collective bargaining was prohibited. This took place or came into effect on May 1st of 2021. So prior to that, we were not permitted to collective bargaining, and now localities can consider that option for their workforce. So when we take the consideration of whether or not the city of Virginia Beach wants to entertain collective bargaining, we can do it one of two ways. There's a way for us to bring forward an ordinance, and additionally, the employees can bring forward a request for us to engage in those collective bargaining processes. When an employee brings forward or when we receive a certification and a recommendation from the employees, we would have 120 days to make a decision. So we need to be thoughtful and considerate about the things that the city may or may not be willing to bargain on. However, to be clear, we're not obligated to undertake this. This is completely a decision by city council. When we get to the place where we're going to make a decision if you all choose to adopt an ordinance or not, there are certain things that we are going to need to include, and we would have to have certification, decertification processes, public notices, all of the reasonable things that would align with a due process associated with undertaking a change to our organization. The ordinance can't include anything that is going to restrict your authority to establish a budget and appropriate funds. So the good news is between 2021, when this started, May 1st of 2021, and today, we have reached out to other localities, and we've got some detailed information about what those localities are doing. The topics on this slide talk about things that are typically included in collective bargaining. None of them are compulsory, so there are lots of topics you guys can include or decide you're not going to include in the ordinance if that's what you decide you would like us to move forward with. There are some things that we cannot do. We cannot require an employee to be a member of the union, and we cannot require employees to pay the labor union dues. So those would be activities for the union themselves. The collective bargaining cannot violate any other Virginia codes. For example, most of you are aware of our state code regarding our grievance processes. So there is some latitude for discussion, but we cannot violate that code. So we will, you know, continue to have a grievance process. And strikes are prohibited under this new law as well, this amended law. So when we are considering whether or not to move forward with collective bargaining, there is some discussion regarding the scope. So the topics that we were going to include, the number of units that we would want to bargain with, employees that are eligible to be members, and those individuals that would be excluded from these processes. This decision is not undertaken lightly by any of us because there's going to be significant impacts to the organization if we move forward with collective bargaining. Pay system modifications, potential policies to modify, benefits to modify. Additionally, you're all aware of us working on bringing on a new human capital management system. So if you were to choose to move forward with an ordinance with these 120-day timelines, we're looking to include information that is going to optimize technology in a way that's going to help us do this, and the budgetary impact. So at some point, Kevin Chatalier would have some information for us on things to consider as well. So we did some research, and these are the most common items we're finding from the other localities where they are permitting collective bargaining. So wages and benefits, working conditions, and grievances. To be clear, this is not all of them. So I have gone through all of the ordinances and identified everything that they have and all of the things that different localities are doing, as well as the number of bargaining units they had. So what we are seeing is that most localities are including the wages and benefits, working conditions, and grievances, and anywhere from three to five bargaining units depending on what that particular locality decided to do. So resource allocation. These also, we've partnered with the other localities, and we're coming in pretty conservative with the resource allocation at this point, somewhere around that three-quarters of a million-dollar mark. And we would be looking for the additional staff to handle the operational impacts and the technology impacts associated with moving forward with an ordinance. So that is our initial conservative estimate, and we can dive deeper into some of those topics if you'd like. We have already started training. So the employee relations staff, the staffing and comp staff, as well as the city attorney, myself, and Monica have started training on this topic so that we are informed and educated. I'm currently doing the Rutgers School of Management. Monica's attending the Cornell, and Marjorie has selected from the city attorney's office a third option. So each of us are going to one thing and sharing the information across the three of us. And then the employee relations staff has joined the organizational membership for Virginia Lira. We've also included the city attorney's office in that and staffing and comp. So we've got a lot of work going on to educate our staff and be prepared for this if this is something we decide to undertake. So that's a very, very high-level overview of the law, the things we can and cannot do, and we are anticipating questions associated with who is doing what and as you guys move through this decision-making process. So at this point, I would like to open up to see what questions you guys have, what discussion we need to have, or if there's any next step considerations.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Michael?
Thank you. Well, I'll ask a couple of questions, and then I don't know if maybe we have a discussion on next steps, and I'll save some remarks for that time. But in your estimated cost of $725,000 for implementation, one of the things that I've and I haven't verified this, I mean, I haven't gone to a deep, deep dive in this yet with my independent research, but it was that other municipalities, for example, in, I think, Fairfax County in Northern Virginia. Could you go back to that slide? I was trying to find the page.
Yeah, go on back, Shelley. To the slide with the localities on it.
Can I?
That one?
No.
Oh, the one with the money?
Yeah, the cost impact.
Yeah.
I think it's like 10.
10. 10, yep.
10. Sorry, thank you. I can't find it in this one either.
There we go.
I was just wondering how this compares because what I've understood was that, for example, I think Fairfax County and possibly other municipalities have been able to incorporate the costs of this through existing FTEs and existing staff resources. So I'm just wondering why or if that's true, A, and then B, why does Virginia Beach anticipate that we would need to add staff resources considering larger municipalities may have been able to absorb them through existing resources?
And as far as, this could be done with existing resources of council, access to absorb this in a budget-neutral way. Council could tell us to use some of the FTE vacancies that we have to reallocate and reappropriate staff for that as well. From, I think from, and I think Stacy and Monica can clean up as well, from what staff has done, this is a research that they've done from the other agencies that have taken this on and looked in at similar size and scope, a lot of this depends on what options council takes, right? If council opts to have collective bargaining only for police and fire, it may have a different impact on this number. If council opts to have collective bargaining for police, fire, trades, EMS, and other services, then it may stay somewhere close to this, or it may push it a little north of this as well. So this is the, this is a very conservative estimate, allowing kind of what we've seen from agencies of our size. But this could also be something where council could say the FTEs use the, use, find these five positions from the hundreds of vacancies that we have currently in the general fund of the city.
And that may be certainly a more budget-friendly option, but I think as we move forward with the discussion, if we do, I'd be very interested in seeing sort of a side-by-side comparison more precisely about what municipalities in other areas have done upon implementation in terms of their staff resources and budget implications. The other thing that I would just add to this conversation really is around, I remember having a conversation that maybe a year or more ago, and it was the departments within the city that we were having the most difficulty around recruiting and retention. For example, Public Safety, Public Works, Public Utilities, Human Services are the very exact city departments that are leading the sort of charge, so to speak, in requesting collective bargaining. And I think, and I made that point when we received that presentation previously, I think we really need to take that into consideration while we are looking at this because what we've always prided ourselves on taking care of the people who work for the city, all the people who work for the city, and the very departments that we're experiencing the most difficulty around filling those vacancies and retaining great talent to provide great services for the public are the ones who are asking us the most vociferously about collective bargaining. And I just think that's something we should be mindful of as we consider this conversation moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for the presentation. I had a couple of questions about the April 2021 memo and was hoping that you might be able to explain a little bit more about these exempt and non-exempt FTEs that were kind of placeholders to backfill for the shop stewards, and whether those are, I guess, required items, are those items that could be subject to the negotiation process? Or are we really looking at two FTEs per shop steward in terms of backfilling? That was my first question. And then the second question I had was some language in the statute that provided that no ordinance or resolution adopted shall include provisions that restrict the governing body's authority to establish the budget or appropriate funds. And so what that means, I guess in my mind, is it doesn't tie our hands in terms of dollars and cents, but I'm hoping that you could maybe flesh that out a little bit more because later on in the memo, it says that if a bargaining agreement were in place, the city may have to garner approval from the bargaining units to forego contractual compensation increases. And how does some of that play out in a collective bargaining scenario?
Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go first, and then Mark might want to opine on some of it, and then Stacy or Monica can clean up as well. As it relates to the exempt employees for shop stewards, it really depends on what options council decide. It's difficult to talk about it now. I think if council wanted us to move forward with this, we could put together a draft ordinance for consideration, and then we could talk about the impacts of those actual points as well. But it depends. Some cities, they have dedicated shop stewards that are part of the union to help with grievance issues and a whole host of other issues. But it depends on what we authorize in a collective bargaining agreement. Okay. And then I'll stick to the other question that you had as it relates to the, and I'll defer to Mark on this one, but from my understanding of it is that nothing that council does can take away council's authority for appropriating the budget and funding the city as well. Depending on what's negotiated on the collective bargaining agreement could have impacts as it relates to how we make certain decisions. For example, if we're seeing recessionary times and there's a need for furloughs or budget cuts or wage reductions, depending on what council negotiates in a collective bargaining agreement that you all approve, it may require us to go to the collective bargaining agreements and say, hey, we need to make a reduction in salaries, and they would have to take that back to their members, and their members would have to vote on that. And if for some reason the members choose not to, depending on what you negotiate in the contract, it may trigger provisions for bumping and layoffs. But it really depends, and it's difficult to know right now until we actually have something in front of us and we can talk about the impacts to the city.
Jen? Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
I don't have much to add. I think that language in, to address the second question you raised, I think that language is a nod to longstanding policy of the Commonwealth that a council can't bind a future council. And so these collective bargaining agreements would have the same language that all your other contracts have, which say, you know, future obligations are subject to appropriation. But as the city manager said, there may be alternative means of compliance that are built into the collective bargaining agreement that are triggered if there is a limit on the amount of the appropriation. So that, for example, there might be other options rather than appropriating more money to satisfy the contractual requirements.
Okay, Jen?
So I would like to see a few options. If we were to look at moving forward with an ordinance and drafting an ordinance, my questions are, how many bargaining units would we have? So I know we have fire, EMS, police, and public works, to council member Lucci's point, that have really been driving and behind advocating for collective bargaining. So I'd like to see of, you know, all the available units, what that looks like in an ordinance. And then I know some of the questions I've heard are, under what conditions would collective bargaining operate? So would it just be wages and pay, or would it also include workplace safety? Would it include other issues that these bargaining units could organize and bring to our attention? So I would like to see a draft ordinance, but I have questions about how many bargaining units and costs associated with that. I'd like to include all the groups that have been advocating for collective bargaining, and I'd like to see the impact on wages and pay, and then also other concerns like workplace conditions and safety.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Amelia, and then Barbara.
If you could go back, and thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
The impacts on page eight.
Okay, back to. Yes.
About the agreement, can you go into a little bit more details?
Yes, ma'am. So the beauty of the way the state code is written is that council has a lot of authority associated with what will be permissible. So that's what the city manager was discussing with regard to, you decide about what we want it to be. And those decisions could impact our pay systems and our policies and benefit modifications. So if we were to settle on three to five bargaining units, if we were to decide that, yes, we're going to bargain on wages and benefits, then all of those topics will then feed over into our human capital management system, right? So if we have multiple pay systems or multiple step plans, whatever we decide to do, we may wind up stacking policies because this portion of the policy might be applicable to this group, but not necessarily another group. And then the benefit modification, both Monica and I are members of the executive benefit committee, and we would work with them to ensure whatever direction we were provided associated with this ordinance was able to be supported by those units. So that's the work we've already been doing.
Effort.
I think to add a little bit, to put it in a more practical sense, so currently right now, there is one pay system, one pay program, one authorized pay plan for the city, right? Depending on the collective bargaining agreements, the world I came from before in Cincinnati as a manager there, there were nine collective bargaining agreements, and each have a different nuance in terms of what the employees are to be paid, different benefits, some had an enhanced dental, some had a different kind of offering for them. Firefighters had a different thing in their collective bargaining agreement. EMS employees had different things in their collective bargaining agreements. Police had different things. That triggers different modules in the city's HR system, right? So currently right now, there is one system with a little bit of nuance right now because, I mean, the sheriff officer is a little different than a budget employee as well. We would just have to add more customization to the human capital system. What Stacy was alluding to before is that council authorized us to do a refresh to our human capital system. We hope to start that work in first quarter calendar year of 2025. If council chose to decide to do collective bargaining and we knew like the end of the summer, that could allow us to plan and program for that to incorporate that, those changes within that system. However, if we don't know till '25, say comes, a future council takes up collective bargaining 2025, it may increase the cost because we would have already set the program up for one module, and then collective bargaining units that may impact a change in that system would be a cost that we'd have to do to amend the system in order to change it.
So could there be any common ground? Because with the nine different units, and each person have what their, because you even mentioned here about ineligible employees. So there's yet another layer. Is there a way for the collective group to come to a more common ground on some of this?
It depends on if what council authorizes, right? If we author, if council authorizes us to have three, four, or five collective bargaining agreements, and then we negotiate the different collective bargaining agreements, council could ask us to, as part of negotiations, try to have some kind of common ground and certain elements of it, and then we can hope to achieve that as part of negotiation. But the negotiations is between us and another party, so we can't necessarily guarantee it. But it doesn't, it's just, it's very nuanced right now. Until we actually go down that step, it's hard to kind of really get a sense of what the impacts can be. We're just letting council know that it can lead to a significant impact in terms of changing and how we do use our technology, but it also may not, depending on what council authorizes.
Yeah, because we have that with transportation. You know, we have that union. So I've seen, you know, some of that in action. Thank you.
And your partner?
I would like to see the ordinances that have been passed by these other localities, or at least some of them.
Yes, ma'am.
And you indicated that there were other subjects that were covered, maybe you can see how they are handling and other subjects. And have they had them in process long enough to have experienced a budget, for example, or they have just adopted?
Yes, ma'am. Some of them are still even standing them up, right? So some of the localities that we have, and we do have all that information, I did bring it with me today, so we're happy to provide it in an executive summary for you. Some of these ordinances are starting, and they're just starting the voting and starting the negotiations. So some of them are already in place, and it is, it is a varied list of things, and we can happily provide that to you. Yep.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you for the presentation. Have we, has your staff had any discussions with anyone, I guess, in Richmond? I was, it appears through the, this memo that we don't have a, I guess, a labor relations board in our state. It's in the resources needed. It says, "Most states with collective bargaining have a labor relations board. However, HB 582 does not establish one in Virginia. In its absence, Virginia Beach would need to play both, play the role of both labor board and employer." What does, what kind of impact would that have on staff?
So the city attorney's office is prepared to assist with the negotiations. And while we're not subject to a labor board, we have got our policies and things that are already in place support the processes that the unions would be asking us to do anyway. We've always had a grievance process. We have due process associated with things. So I don't know that the absence of that is going to be a burden because when the negotiations are settled and the collective bargaining agreement is in place, that's going to be our guideline until that agreement comes up for renegotiation. Marjorie, did you have anything to add?
No, the board. Yeah, no problem. Hi, everybody. I haven't met you. Marjorie Smith from the city attorney's office. One of my main roles is employment law, so I would be helping on implementing any ordinance going forward and working on any changes in policies and so forth. With regard to the labor relations board for the city, I don't think we'd have, or in Virginia generally, it doesn't have that much impact, as Stacy said. We already have, although there's some options with like grievances, we already have boards in place, or there are hearing officers or different things in place to review issues that come up. If there is differences between the unions and the city, then there are potentials, depending on what we decide, of going forward in front of a hearing officer to discuss those, and there's a set procedure for that. In fact, when I talked to Alexandria on an issue recently, they had to do that, and they discussed what that process looked like. So there are other processes that basically do the same thing without having an oversight board, so to speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else at this point?
If I can make a, you know, suggestion to anybody, I really think it's important that we try to get to a win-win. Oh, I'm sorry. Josh, I'm sorry.
By no means. Good, I want you to stop.
No, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Just quickly, I wanted to ask, because, you know, when we're out in the public, we hear people who are, you know, concerned, asking questions. You know, I think it's worth noting that the statute does still prohibit strikes by public employees. And on top of that, still requires termination of employees who do strike and prohibits public employment for a year. So I think that's worthy to note for both the public and for all of us. And while I noticed that there were some possible, obviously, these impacts are mostly financial administrative in nature, you know, in the, in the discussions I've had, you know, the You know, in the discussions I've had, you know, there, it was communicated to me that going through a collective bargaining process lends transparency, you know, to negotiating the employment relationship with our public employees. There is a feeling that it, you know, it adds a little bit of stability and certainty in terms of outcomes predictability year over year. And I just, I wanted to, I wanted to ask you about, you know, your reaction to that. And then before you answer, I just also wanted to acknowledge, along with the rest of us acknowledging, many firefighters and EMS personnel and our public works employees who have showed up today. And we really do appreciate your service to our city, all of our city workers.
One of the things that Monica and I are very passionate about is transparency in our processes. We regularly get employees that reach out, I don't understand this, help me understand. One of the things that I've done as your employee relations administrator is implemented employee policy training. If the employees know the rules and regulations that govern the organization they work for, they're in a better position to advocate for themselves. And we want to continue to do that, whether we have a collective bargaining agreement or not. And we're just, yes, there's transparency already. And yes, if these employees have a collective bargaining agreement, there will be additional transparency. What I would like council to hear from both of us is, we are happy to discuss anything with any employee or any leader in this organization at any time. And that has been a mission that I've been on the entire 20 years I've been with the city, but more so in my current role, encouraging people, please call us, please ask the questions. We aren't trying to hide the ball. We are not trying to, you know, smoke and mirrors. We're going to point to the place where it's already in our policies or already in our code. And if there's a concern, let's bring it on. Monica, do you have anything to add? Nope, okay.
Okay.
Well, I would join my colleagues to the left here. And I would also be somebody who would be in favor of at least seeing what an ordinance might look like in this case. And using some of the other ordinances from other localities that have come through this process. And just not really side off the ball, because I think we do have it to our employees.
We've made this appeal to us, and we just keep the time moving.
No, along that line, and you know, what I was going to suggest, that, you know, once again, I think we should move forward toward a win-win situation. And, you know, I think, you know, this is new ground for a lot of us right now. And I think if we proceed judiciously, but expeditiously, you know, and I was thinking about maybe, yeah, what about the thought of getting a short-term task force? And I mean, short-term, that actually could, you know, where we get some of the principals involved with some of the other things and, you know, come up with some different types of ordinances that are the options available that we can incorporate, you know, within going forward, using the best practices of the other cities that have done this, and even outside. You know, I think one of the things is, you know, it's, you know, when we look at things that, you know, I'm a, I'm not, you know, a union advocate per se, but in the same thing, if this is a collective bargaining agreement with understands like you brought up about no striking and, you know, considerations like that. The other thing I would recommend, the thing that we have to respect the authority of the police chief, the fire chief, of the department heads, but also at least give voice to, you know, the workers below. And the other thing is too, and, you know, what really moves me, you know, especially in my role, you know, over the last couple of years, you know, we're definitely concerned about retention and recruitment of officers. Now, we're on a positive trend going, but we want to make sure that positive, you know, trend continues. And, you know, it's my understanding that a lot of things, even in public works, we're going to have to, you know, make sure that we stay competitive and things there. But the other thing is, I really think there has to be provisions. You know, government is a lot different than, you know, the public sector in terms of things. What happens, God forbid, if we really come in into a bad economic shortfall of things? You know, if we can include those type of provisions in, that, you know, there would have to be this mutual understanding of the roles and responsibilities that each body has going forward. But I think we should, you know, proceed with the thing that we want to get some, move toward, you know, a win-win situation in this. And perhaps, what's your thoughts about putting together a task force with council liaisons and get together with the principal, all the principals concerned, which includes the, you know, the fire chief, the police chief, and everybody? You know, to try to put then and really come up, you know, in a collaborative, you know, collective bargaining with a collaborative effort for everybody concerned. Yeah.
Having people talking at each other.
They're talking.
They can be a proactive listening. They can understand where we are, and we listen to see where the contour, the middle ground.
Yeah. Yeah, Jen.
My question is, what would be the timeline? Because what I heard from the city manager is that, when is the new system going up?
The new system, when is?
January 25 is when we're anticipating to go live. So we're in the process of building things now.
And typically, what we found, it's got approved in 2021. And Stacy, I'm probably going to need you to correct me. I don't think there's a city that has, that's officially been able to kind of stand this up fully yet. They've adopted it, they've adopted, and they've identified groups. And I think some have even had their agreements presented to council. So it's about an 18 to 24-month process. Anyway, I would say, don't let that drive council, right? You all have to make the best policy decision that you all want to. And then we will work on, that's something you all, we will work on presenting to you what the financial impacts will be as relates to that. There is contingency in any of our projects, especially our IT projects as well. So there may be additional funds that can cover it if we need to go over for a little bit as well. So I wouldn't put restrictions on how long it takes council to make the best policy decision.
But by the same token, Jen, I think, you know, we should at least have the skeleton framework about what we're going to be talking about in terms of developing the future course in some short order. So, you know, I would recommend that we, you know, in rapid fashion, you know, convene, you know, the proper people, get the discussions going. And, you know, at least, hopefully, by the time we have our next retreat, maybe, you know, have a working, some working documents that we could actually really delve in on. So, you know, I would say, you know, get that, you know, just take it in terms of, you know, of progression, that it's always moving forward.
And Mayor, if I could, please. One of the things that we were finding that might be helpful is phase implementation. So a lot of these bargaining agreements have started with public safety first. So once the council identified how many bargaining units they were willing to entertain, public safety first, and then they are incrementally moving forward so that it's not all at once, or, you know. So we do have some options there.
Right, but the other thing is too, I think everybody should be at the table at the beginning, you know, in terms of employee representation, with the intent of, if we can find commonality, so we don't have, you know, multiple, you know, sectors with, you know, with diffuse collective bargaining. What do you think about that, Mr. De Haney?
I'm trying to figure out how, in practice, like, in a practical way, how that would work. Is the goal that it would be representatives from labor associations on this task force?
What's the council's thought? I think, you know, at this point, you know, all voices should, you know, at least have the input to find out exactly where they stand. You know, because especially if we could have like an unwritten goal that, you know, commonality, you know, what we have, you know, I think it would make it a cleaner process going forward. Chris?
Sensitive topic, but if we're going to go down the path of, I guess, a task force, my hope is that from liaisons, it would be, and I know we're nonpartisan, but when you do look at the PBA and the fire, and you look at the contributions this last election cycle, $95,000 to primarily one party. I think from a council standpoint, my hope would be that.
You know, be assured, we will, you know, we can all agree that we will point the best possible folks with, you know, the clearer intentions. You know, once again, this, you know, this has got to be a we thing, not any me things. Yes.
Just a quick thought on liaisons. And I absolutely share and appreciate your concern, Councilmember Taylor. Is it worth thinking about not having liaisons and just having regular reporting back to the whole council?
I think that might be the cleanest way to do that. And this way, we make any decisions as a body, as long as you're, I'm fine with that. I always want to give council the opportunity to be involved, but perhaps, you know, let the outside set of eyes come together. And, you know, this way would eliminate any of the concerns you have. Fair enough.
Would 90 days be too aggressive?
We set a goal of 90, but once again, you know, once, you know, things start, you know, getting in the works and everything, if, you know, we can get at least an initial report from them. And if they need additional time, I think we can, you know, move forward judiciously.
Mayor, would you like to take the similar approach that you took with the ICRB?
Yes, exactly.
That basically council adopted legislation for task force and appointed task force, and gave them X amount of days. And I think they eventually did come back to council and asked council for additional time, and council did grant that. And then do you think one of the goals from this is for them to give council a recommended, like with the ICRB, a recommended rules of regulations for you all to accept? Like, could it be a recommended ordinance for council to consider? You know, that touch bases on the various elements, that number of collective bargaining agreement, and what's the scope of collective bargaining? Is that one of the goals?
Yeah, and, you know, I tell you, it's almost like a swath of analysis of, you know, what could, you know, what could be? You know, what are, you know, the strength weaknesses, you know, obstacles and threats that are involved, you know, with there? And this way, we have, you know, a total picture. But I think the important is that we bring, you know, the folks to the table, you know, that have the input and concerns. And, you know, this way, it's more of a comprehensive study. They will be at the table too. And, you know, but I think, you know, and just based on my conversations with council members, I think we want to, we want to do something that really solidifies the future. And, you know, but once again, you know, especially in the areas that are difficult to recruit and retain, you know, this could be a proper vehicle. But once again, I think it also has to be done with the spirit of collaboration. You know, it's not going to be in any way us versus them, you know. It's, you have the idea to actually improve the system. Yes, Jen, and then Sabrina.
Is 60 days too short for turnaround?
Did you say 90?
He said 90. I'm asking if 60 is too short.
I think Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, I think if you all recall, when we first, when council first authorized the ICRB task force, it was around a similar timeframe, heading into summer. And because of the holidays, council had to extend out to probably about like September, October as well. So I do think probably something that gets us into the middle of fall or early fall probably is best likely to go because a lot of people take vacations at this time of the year.
Sabrina?
Thank you. I'm really glad to see that we are having this conversation and this discussion. Certainly, collective bargaining is something that I've always supported and will continue to support. If for nothing, to look at some of the benefits, I remember coming on board in 2018 and talking to some of the workers and the staff. And they were concerned about things like pay differential for night pay, for working overtime, and certain benefits that they had at the beginning that somehow they don't take part in anymore. And so I do know the difference of what you get in terms of benefits, whether your staff or whomever, is who's negotiating for you at the table. And so this is a way to have the right folks at the table, negotiating for staff, negotiating for public safety and others who wish to see the optimal pay benefits for what they do. And we certainly want to make sure that we make a pathway to that type of discussion and agreement. So glad to see that we're having that conversation.
And I think the important thing is to have the conversation. And I think, you know, and I concur with the things that if we can get, you know, whether it be multiple drafts or multiple suggestions and everything. And, you know, with the idea, but, you know, once again, you know, this is a progression type thing. You got to crawl before you can walk, you got to walk before you can run. But we got to start the, at least the process of moving. And I think, you know, that would, you know, satisfy, you know, a lot of folks going forward. Are there any other closing, you know, thoughts or concerns? Amelia?
I would consider, we have these other cities, and I've said that to the, as well at Richmond, and some of these other cities, that we could look at their best practices for what they have started to guide us.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thanks a bunch, and thanks for doing some great work. And thank you all for coming and participating.
I like the white glasses.
Hello. Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Monica Shapiro from the city manager's office would like to kick off what we hope will be a process that you will allow us to move forward with, that we can go over at your retreat. We hope to have a retreat scheduled with council towards the end of summer to talk about the different focus areas you'd like for staff to prioritize as we head into the budget and as we consider adopting and refreshing a strategic plan for the next couple of years. So Monica's going to give an overview of the proposed process that we'd like to use and to seek your feedback on that process.
Okay, so I feel like you took tons of my thunder, but I will try to follow. Essentially, our current two-year plan ends on June 30. And the manager really challenged us to come up with a way to approach this refresh, this rewrite that really includes best practices, but was really heavily rooted in pragmatic approach. I love best practices, but he is a great active listener, and he's been listening to you all. And he felt like we needed to approach this in a way that's really rooted in pragmatism. So I'll be proposing an approach that is a bit unorthodox, but I think it's going to meet our needs. I always like to start with grounding us in why organizations of every type, across every sector, any industry engages in strategic planning. And it's these same questions I shared with you, I guess, almost two years ago. These questions don't change. Any organization that wants to function at its highest level wants to be able to answer these questions. So the questions don't change, but the answers to the questions change. Any business, any organization, needs to be able to answer these questions. This next slide is one that I'm really passionate about. As I said two years ago, I think in government, we do a lot of planning, but making sure we're intentional about pausing and assessing our performance is really important. So we can learn from our lessons, also learn from opportunities. So making sure that we pause. So making sure that we pause and evaluate ourselves is really important. So what we've been doing for the last two years is just that, building this internal infrastructure to make sure that we can really thoughtfully and accurately assess our performance. So over this past two years, the manager has set up a really robust stat program that our Office of Performance and Accountability, TAM, he's our director for OPA, they run. And really, they meet in here. And we talk about our performance using data, qualitative and quantitative data. So we have a two-year strategic plan. We have an evaluation process twice a year. I guess this past year, we did it once a year. We publish to you how we have been performing. And we have internal discussions. All of that's great, all of that's best practice, but it only matters if what's in the plan matters to you all. So really need to check in with you all to make sure we come up with a plan that matters to you all. Again, wanted to approach this in a way that takes the principles of strategic planning. Strategic planning is my background, is how I came to be. So I'm really passionate about strategic planning, but wanting to take it in a different route, a different path. So really don't want to use the term strategic plan. Want to use the term twenty-four-month focused action plan, really getting the sentiment that we do a lot of planning, but people want to see some action. So really want to make sure that we have a plan that's straightforward and rooted, like I said, in pragmatism. So this is what we're after. We want to know from you all, where do you want us to focus? And what do you want us to emphasize for the next twenty-four months? That's really what we want to focus on. These are the elements of a strategic plan. Doesn't matter whose strategic plan you pick up, whether it's Bank of America, whether it's Lowe's, these are the elements of a strategic plan. We might call them different things rather than a key focus area. They might call them goals rather than initiatives. They might call them tactics. But these are the elements of a traditional strategic plan. This is also typically the same sequence in which you develop those elements. But what I'm proposing is a slightly different sequence. Really want to start with your objectives. Just go straight to the heart of hearing from you, what is it that you want to achieve or these next twenty-four months? You typically don't start with that, but really want to try this out and start there. The next thing is really developing the performance measures. Typically, you do this last. And typically, this has been staff-led. But we know that what gets measured gets done. And also, how you define success should really impact how you go about trying to achieve it. So your performance measure should influence your strategies, your initiatives. So because so much of that has really large implications, it's like a no-brainer that that should be council-led, not staff-led. So really having council start with what it is you want to accomplish and what does progress look like this, look like in this area? What does placing emphasis on this item look like to you? We might have different opinions as what that success looks like as staff. So being able to hear directly from you all will then influence the tactics we create, the taxes, tactics we want to use to be successful. And then lastly, looking at the key focus areas, those are typically those big groupings of how you communicate things. Safe, vibrant community, high-performing organization. Typically, you start with those. But it's kind of like, why start with those and then force fit council into those buckets? Let that happen naturally. So let you have a conversation about what it is you want to accomplish. And then those qualitative theming is what we call it in qualitative research, will become apparent. And then we will be able to bring some key focus areas for your consideration. So that's the concept. How do we want to get there? It's pretty straightforward. We want to have robust, informed discussion that leads to just straightforward language. Heavy emphasis on informed. So what we would want from council is to come prepared to this retreat with information from various sources. Triangulation of data is always good. So informed by obviously the people you serve. This is a very engaged council. You all are meeting with your constituents constantly. You're holding town halls. So really have you organize and synthesize that data in a way that you can come to the retreat and really represent that, as well as the resident survey. We recently had the contractor do cross tabs for every single question and the descriptive statistics. So you can not only just see how overall the residents rated, but in your particular district, you can see what percentage said excellent, what percentage said good. So really get that to you so you can study it and come prepared and be informed by that. And then the mayor talked about a SWOT, so environmental scanning. You all don't govern in a utopia. You govern in reality. So we will want some type of environmental scanning, whether it's a SWOT or a pestle analysis. But as you think about what your priorities or what you want to focus on, that should be rooted in reality. So there might be an initiative you're interested in, but when you look at the political climate or you look at the economy, you might say that's more of a thirty-six-month horizon rather than twenty-four. So while it's important, just looking at the reality, we probably not going to make much progress on that. So that's a longer horizon. So informed by the people you serve, informed by the environment. And then lastly, informed by your current commitments. So you already have lots of plans. You have a sustainability plan. You have an arts plan. A lot of those plans have principles and ideals, but you might want to pull from those and say, hey, this is something from the arts plan. It's an ideal, but we want to see some action put behind it. So really, we'll give you those plans. You can request plans, but have you go through, look through them and pull out things that you really want to emphasize for the next twenty-four months. And then a slightly different retreat format. No city staff presentations. This is really you and your facilitator having a robust discussion about where, what you want to focus on. So without diving too deep into the details, what that would look like is maybe having each of you share ten, fifteen things that you want to emphasize for the next twenty-four months, going out, reporting that. But because you don't govern as individuals, you govern as a collective body, there would be some type of exercise. We don't want to call it voting. I've been calling it an expression of agreement. And the manager hasn't fired me yet for coming up with that, but it's some type of expression of agreement. Thinking maybe stickers, where everyone is given a limited number of stickers. And whatever initiatives have, whatever majority represents, moves to the second step. And the second step is you and your facilitator talking about, so what does progress look like for this initiative? What does emphasis look like for this initiative? And department leadership is there. We're listening. If you have questions, we can help inform. But what we're doing is listening because these two things will help give us the foundations for your objective statements and your performance measures. We're not going to ask you to write the measures, what's the numerator and denominator, but hearing what you define as success will help us. So those are the concepts. What does that look like with dates next to it? Essentially, from now until August would be your pre-work of looking through these plans, synthesizing the data you have from your constituents so that you can show up on August 22nd. Don't quite remember how we came up with the 22nd. Maybe that's already on hold on your calendars. But coming on August 22nd, prepare to really share out what you want to focus on, doing that environmental scan with your facilitator, doing this expression of agreement, and then talking about performance measures. And that's the day. And then the very following day, our departmental leadership will stay back. We'll have that same facilitator. And we'll start building the bones based on what we've heard you all say. And then, of course, want to include some community feedback. That could look different ways. Something that we're playing around with is maybe a survey, maybe meeting people in the community and say, hey, these are the areas that council is thinking of. How would you define success? When you think about your government, what would success look like to you? So that we also have their feedback. And what staff would do in record time is continue to draft and refine. We would provide council a draft plan on September 22nd, that Friday, as part of your council package. And because this is not an academic research or academic exercise, we're not talking about fifty pages. We're really thinking a twenty-four-month focused action plan. So pretty straightforward reading that you would do over the weekend, hopefully. And then we would come to a similar setting, get your feedback, go back, make any edits, and then provide to you on October 13th, a final draft. And then hopefully on the 17th, we can decide what feels right to this council, whether it's formally adopting it through a vote, whether it's simply affirming it. But getting something in front of you so you can do another expression of agreement. Because what that would do is really send us as staff off running for the horses, because that's then going to guide our budget. It's going to guide where we put our efforts and our resources. So we would then come to you mid-year and year-end with a performance report where we will have those initiatives. And we'll tell you, this is what we've done on this initiative. We'll have those performance measures. And we'll be able to share, this is how we're performing. So that's the plan. But we want to co-create this with you because this is one of those initiatives of how you do it is just as important as what you end up with, the final deliverable. So really want to make sure you feel as though this is something you can get behind. So really want to invite you all to have conversation, give gut reactions.
Barbara?
I think you're a mind reader. Because you couldn't have said it better than what I've been thinking. This very first statement, if you don't measure results, you can't tell success from failure. And I think that's what we are lacking. We do an awful lot of talking about ideas and philosophies, but it's those deliverables that we're sitting here, City Manager, trying to provide to our citizens who want to know why they don't have a sidewalk here or why we haven't finished this road or why. It's, those are the things that we're responsible for. And I think you've just said it so well. It's those things that we measure. And if we can't show that we have delivered, we're not doing our job. And I'm so glad to see you've got dates here. It's not just an idea that you're floating. You've got a plan. And I think that's exactly what we should do. And what has been missing is that we haven't been doing what we had done at some point. And that is actually expressing who thinks what. And using the stickers is something we have done before. And it's a great way to tell which things have the support and which things don't. And if you don't have that, we don't really know. You're all are just trying to guess what we're thinking. So I think you've done a great job. And I love seeing that format there that says we can, we've got an action plan because that's what we need, is an action plan. You've done a great job.
Thank you very much.
And following what Barbara just said, I think this is a great tool, you know, that we can use. You know, it's setting the table for the budget, you know, in terms of actually getting a handle on the true priorities. As we all know, especially over the years, with the economy and everything else, priorities can change in a heartbeat. And this would be a contemporary way to get us current, you know, about the real picture that you're, Mr. DeHany, your staff is going to be confronting as we go through the thing. And I think it also provides a clarity, not only to the council, but to the public, you know, about what we're doing and why. Anybody else? Okay, Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Monica. This was excellent. Just something that kind of struck me as I was thinking about some of the things that we may want to achieve in the context of this, our voting system that we have. And I would just maybe encourage you to think about, you know, helping us stay focused on, yes, the district priorities are very important. There's also that parallel narrative that we've got citywide priorities. And we should also be thinking about those, you know, how we work those larger, bigger priorities without, of course, losing sight of the more near-to-ground that district level concerns. And I do, I like the idea of maybe, you know, some sort of like, you know, like a Wordle, you know, where we've got, you know, big, you know, like one of those.
Oh, Wordle, just tell me more, I'm curious.
Yeah, yeah. Like if we've got, you know, shared priorities, then, you know, have those really be right in front of our face and that way we can see them and kind of dive into them a little bit.
I'm glad you said that because the facilitator, we're being very intentional. The facilitator, we want to use specialized in visualizations because an important part of a retreat is trust. So when you say something, you want to know that what you said has been captured and you want to be able to follow it through. And the facilitator specializes in using visualizations throughout the retreat. So Wordle duly noted. It's one of the tools that we might use.
Okay, Worth?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Shapiro. Because as I sit here, six months into my first term, and see, you know, what we've accomplished so far and what we can accomplish, I can think of a number of issues and items right now, affordable and workforce housing and four or five others. I think this will crystallize and get it down in writing with dates and measures that makes us all win. And I think this is a great step, so I'm very excited about it. Thank you.
Good, Jen.
Just add to it, thank you, Monica, for the presentation. Just the opportunity for us to talk to each other so that there's not a lot of presentations to us, but it's our opportunity, because we don't have a lot of time, to do that and really work through important issues and to put us on a timeline like this. So I am grateful for this opportunity. I think it's going to be a great use of our time. So I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, anybody else? Amelia?
I just want to mention, as you presented this, you are no-nonsense person. And that is important because you presented it with a smile. You presented it about co-creating. So it's not about me or you, it's about us. So to me, that hit home. And I really appreciate what you have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Outstanding work as usual.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. At this time, at the request of council, some members of council staff is going to brief you on the Twenty-Fourth Street Projection Art Project and hope to seek some guidance as it relates to next steps on this project.
Okay. I think that's going to do it for me. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thanks for having us this afternoon. I'm a representative of a citywide team, including cultural affairs, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, information technology and public works that has been working on this project. And we're here to provide background and some possible next steps for your discussion. So, projection art. Projection mapping uses very powerful equipment, an advanced software to project video on large structures. There is a variety of projection art examples, one of them being pieces that are created specifically for a city to tell the history of a place. We'll see in the next slide, some examples from Saga in San Antonio. There's touring shows, which can be rented or licensed for a certain period of time. There are seasonal shows that can correspond with holidays. And then there's interactive shows that include and integrate technology, sometimes using cell phones or a person's movement. So the background, in 2018, the Atlantic Avenue Association, along with resort stakeholders, planned a block party at Twenty-Fourth Street and featured a projection show. It was projected from the park onto the blank wall of the Comfort Inn and Suites. From there, the Resort Advisory Committee's Oceanfront Enhancement Committee spearheaded an effort to bring year-round immersive projection art to the resort. And I did include the images from Saga, which is the bottom two. And that is a twenty-minute show that is provided year-round for free to visitors. In 2020, projection art is included in the RESAP plan. And in FY23, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from the TIP fund was allocated for a permanent projection art station at Twenty-Fourth Street Park. So you may ask, what goes into a project budget for projection art? And it's very complex. into a project budget for projection art? And it's very complex. So it includes buying and installing high-tech projectors that are mounted in their own weatherproof enclosure to the top of the 24th Street stage, then running fiber from the stage to the convention center, which will, would house the hardware and the software for the project. And then any structural improvements that would need to be done to the stage to hold the weight of the projectors, as well as the cost of the shows and the operations of the project. So we took the, with the direction from council and FY23 budget, we initiated a request for proposal process in the fall. We did two different solicitations, and one vendor submitted our proposal. The city was looking for a turnkey operation to include all the necessary components of the project, as well as operations. The vendor, we received one vendor, one proposal, and the vendor let us know that it could not accomplish all the desired tasks within the RFP. But they did submit their best and final in May of 2023, but their, the cost of the project in there, and then to include the operations and the artwork exceed the $750,000 that was appropriated in this current fiscal year. We've, as staff, researched other tasks that are necessary to implement projects like this, but there is limited data and information since we've only had one responder. So we wanted to bring it to you today for possible options to consider as next steps. The, number one, cancel, we could cancel the current solicitation and request a carryforward. Since the $750,000 was appropriated for a specific purpose, it could be eligible for the carryforward process, which then budget reviews all the carryforward requests this summer, and then brings them to you all for your approval. We could allocate additional funding if the council desires to move forward with this vendor through council action. Or we could reallocate the funds. The council could direct us to pause to receive your guidance on the reallocation of money to other projects in the TIP fund. So that's all we have today. I'm happy to take your questions.
Chris, and then Worth.
Emily, thank you for the presentation, and being flexible with our desire to bring it back. Being that this was an item with the last council, and this kind of fits with within Ms. Monica's presentation, of those council members that were previously here, was this something that was supported utilizing TIP funds? We just haven't had that conversation.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, I think the council member that spearheaded this and advocated for this is not on the council anymore as well. So I don't know. I think the other council member supported the colleague in bringing this initiative forward for the resort area, you know. But I think your question is timely, as it relates to what's council's desire, what to do with this, either this program or these funds at this time.
And then we recently, we're getting ready to kick off the Van Gogh.
Mm-hmm.
That's immersive art.
Yes, it is, exactly. It's indoor.
It's inside. Would that be considered public art?
Absolutely. It's projection art, but not, it's inside of a building, and many, that's been very popular all through the.
So because you mentioned the RASAP Plan, and so we really have achieved that target with the Van Gogh experience coming here, outside of this item. Okay. And what is the cost of that to the, is that coming out of TIP? Is this, can you speak to that, the cost of the Van Gogh experience for the taxpayer?
I think it's coming out of the operating budget of CVB, and likely that is coming from either their general fund operating budget or TIP, or I don't think it's TIP or possibly TIP. But it's something that they're authorized to do in their operating budget. I don't think it necessarily needs council approval like some of the other sponsorships, but this is something that they're doing as part of their operating budget.
And there's not a permanent commitment to that immersive experience?
Correct. There is not a permanent commitment to it.
And then finally, because part of my reasoning, you know, suggesting we bring this to the body is, we are in a district system, and although it would be incredible to have an experience like this at the oceanfront, we do have district members that, and business owners and individuals that pay into admissions tax and own restaurants all over the city. And so I just wanted to understand, before we made this commitment of 750 plus plus, that council had an opportunity to see if it was the direction we wanted to go in with the almost $3 million investment, based on information we already have, and that was the 750 with the $400,000 plus up, and then roughly $600,000 a year to maintain it?
About $300,000.
It's come down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so 2.5 million. So that was my motivation in, not necessarily challenging staff, but encouraging staff to bring it back to this body, was it is a, the language says permanent. And so that means permanent funding. And we are in a position where I think, I guess cash is tight. So just wanted to share that with the body.
Good. Worth, did you have a hand up? And then Michael?
Yes, a couple of items. So Councilman Taylor and I, both at the suggestion of Resort Advisory Commission members and OEC Oceanfront Enhancement Committee, the funds to install this with only one vendor making one proposal, and I believe staff has tried to get more vendors and more proposals, that exceeded $1 million, it's $1,200,000 for the upfront cost to install. And then the other thing initially was the cost annually of over $600,000. Now I believe it's, you're saying it's a little over $300,000. The value and the return on the investment, as Councilman Taylor just said, just for the resort, just in one location. And so I think that's got everyone, is concerned everyone, the return on that investment. Well, there's no question, everyone loves this program in San Antonio. It's an enhancement to the oceanfront, but at a pretty steep cost. And so going forward, I'm around the table, what you all think, but I would say, just don't get rid of it, but at the same time, I would not go forward.
Okay, Michael, and then Josh.
Well, Mr. Lobos, thank you very much for your presentation. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the work that you and your colleagues and folks in the city, in cultural affairs, do to promote arts and culture and humanities in Virginia Beach. Do an excellent job. And I don't think this presentation is any exception. So thank you very much. We just heard from the two liaisons. So I guess I have a question for them before I begin. Is that, would you say, would you be able to characterize that's the position of the Resort Advisory Commission or the resort community on this particular project? The positions that you reflected?
Folks are not satisfied that we are getting the value for the investment.
For the investment.
And from only one proposal.
Okay.
And Ms. Lobos, thank you also for the presentation. Can you go through the vendor proposal process? And we did, you staff has tried to get other proposals and.
It's, the solicitation.
Sorry, if I may.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to make a couple of other points, but I'm happy to do that after you answer Ms. Remick's question.
The solicitation is handled through the purchasing division. So they, we developed a scope of work, an RFP, and provided them about 25 possible vendors. The RFP was sent out two different times. So there are other vendors, there's a multitude of vendors, but those were the ones that we identified.
Thank you. Would you mind going to slide two, and then to, beginning on slide two? You know, I just want to just share, you know, as a museum professional, I do have some familiarity with public art, and the impact that public art can have on a community and on a destination, and the economic impacts that programs like this can have for communities. So I don't think anyone around this table is in disagreement about that. But when you look at slide two, I mean, and then you go to slide three, see what happened in San Antonio, what was on slide two before, compared with the rendering that we see for Virginia Beach, it just doesn't, doesn't take any familiarity in public art, or to be a museum person like I am, to just see that that's just not, we just haven't quite hit the mark. And I don't think we should take something like this off the table. I think a program like this, when employed very well, could have a transformational impact on Virginia Beach experience for residents and for visitors, and position ourselves for success moving forward in a variety of ways. Could be an incredible complement to the sports tourism we talked about. But anyway, I want to belabor the point, because I think the liaison's already made it. We're just not quite there, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Josh?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Lobos, thank you very much for the presentation. Just a quick question, is, was it contemplated that this be stationary and permanent at its location? Are there, are there types out there that are movable?
Yes, there are, yes. There's additional costs when you move a projector for calibrating, and, but yes, they are definitely movable.
Thank you. And I don't want to reiterate all of the praise that Councilmember Lucci just gave you, but I feel the same way. So you did a great job.
Appreciate it.
Amelia, and then Barbara.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Lobos. I remember they coming to me, to the Virginia African-American Culture Center about this, and then I hadn't heard anything for a while. So who brought this back up?
Ms.
Resort Advisory Commission, here's the cost associated, especially the annual cost and the installation cost.
Okay, because I thought it was dead in the water, had not heard anything, and suddenly today here it is again. Well, I'm with you all at this point for putting this aside for now.
Okay, anybody else? And Barbara?
Which of the three options are you recommending?
From what I'm hearing, I think the options we're going to take is option three. And what that would look like is that we would notify the vendor that we're canceling procurement, and then the city would just, the funds would just go back to fund balance in the TIP, you know, for council to reallocate in the future.
Just to be plain and clear, we're just going to pause on this issue. Doesn't mean it's gone away, but you're going to kind of start it over again. And for right now, we're going to look at reallocating this money to something else in the TIP fund.
Correct. So basically, it'll just go into the TIP balance, and council could use it for future initiatives and other priorities. But this will be an effectively pause for, until it's taken up again if council wants to.
We'll see if it comes up in the retreat that we're going to be having as a priority. I think that's the whole thing, is we've got to weigh in our priorities and decide what's at the top there.
I guess I get the sense that, you know, at this point, your timing is not optimal for this. And would I be wrong in saying it's the council's feeling that that, you know, we should do a strategic delay on this and come back and revisit it? Anybody object to that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at the request of several members of council, staff is going to give an overview of the city's homelessness programs and the different offerings that we have in our homelessness program, in addition to some of the additions that we've done in fiscal year 24 budget.
Good afternoon. Mayor Dyer, good afternoon. Vice Mayor Wilson, and council members, thank you so much for your time this afternoon. I am going to be talking today about making homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring in the city of Virginia Beach. The overview, if I pick this up. Oh, thank you. Gotcha. Thank you. That, now we should be good. Thank you so much. All right. So the background today, I'm going to talk to you about our mission and our goals, understanding homelessness, how many people are homeless, as well as how we compare with other cities. Then we're going to talk about the history and the background. I'm going to have Pamela Shine, who is my homelessness administrator, come in and help discuss the system overview and the results. And then I will jump in again and talk about challenges and how we're addressing them. So our goal is to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring. What that means in a nutshell is that we prevent people from becoming homeless, we shorten the length of time that they experiencing, they experience homelessness, and then we connect people to the permanent housings that they need and wrap support around them to help them ensure their success. So there are multiple factors that impact homelessness. And people that are experiencing homelessness are very diverse, as are their needs. They move in and out of homelessness on an ongoing basis, and there's not a finite number of people that are homeless and stay homeless. So as you can imagine, people come into the system and they move out of the system. Many people resolve their homelessness on their own, and the length of homelessness can be short. It can be several years, or could be even longer than that. We provide a coordinated, multidisciplinary effort. And what we do is recognizing that homelessness is really, really complex. We understand that we need multiple agencies to connect and help us with people that, to address the issue. Agencies would be behavioral health, police, healthcare, and the justice system. They all intersect together to work with us for people that are experiencing homelessness. I do want to say, though, that people, that being homeless is not a crime, and so people are free to be in public spaces, as you know, regardless of their housing status. And we don't restrict individuals' movement or control their behaviors to the extent that they're not breaking the law. And even if there is law being broken, we leave that to that punitive work to our police, and not to our homeless services division. So people who are homeless have personal choice, and we can't force them to accept help. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the national homelessness trends. This is 2017 to 2022 numbers. We do a point in town, time count every year in January, the last week usually of the month in January. And this is data from our annual homeless assessment report. You can see that downturn in 2021. The reason for that was because HUD did not require an unsheltered count nationally that year, although the city of Virginia Beach did one. When Pam comes up and talks to you, you will hear about what our numbers track that, that year. But because of the disruption from the pandemic, those numbers were not counted. You can see the numbers have trended upward again, about 2,500 people from 2021 to 2022. So how do we compare to other cities about our size and in our region? So if you look at 2022 data, Virginia Beach has 7.73 per 10,000 people of the general population. If you look at our population of 460,000 people, it's less than 1% of people that are experiencing homelessness in our city. You can look at, and the Newport News Peninsula, they are higher than we are at 8.32%. And then Norfolk, Chesapeake, and Western Tidewater is all in one continuum of care, and their numbers are 13.72. The reason we put San Diego here is because San Diego is similar to us as a community in terms of military, in terms of coastal city, also in terms of population. And you can see their numbers there. So we have a community system that has been around for over 30 years. It consists of our faith community, it consists of the city and nonprofits that come together to work on this issue together. And 30 years ago, winter shelter was the original way that the city managed people experiencing homelessness. And then in 2009, Beach Community Partnership was brought together. Interesting enough, I was on the inaugural executive team for Beach in 2009. I was one of the founding members. I was the executive director of Samaritan House at the time. And so I've been doing homelessness services over 24 years here in our region. I wanted to say that it has been a really good collaboration that we'll talk about a little bit in, more in a minute. But the key milestones that led to our transformation of our service system had to do with a community of one strategic plan that was adopted in 2017. And I'll give you an update about the, that going forward at the end of the presentation. But also, the greatest thing that the city did in terms of appropriation of funding, that you as council members, either those that were on the council at that time in 2017, we opened the HRC, and that is our one-stop-shop for anyone experiencing homelessness in the city. And we are really proud of what we do through the HRC. So let me talk a little bit about the Housing First philosophy. So our system is guided by this approach. And what it means is that people will have a stable place to live while they are working on the steps that they need to thrive. And what that means for us is that What we do is we wrap services around them, but it doesn't mean we have more capacity. So if somebody is experiencing homelessness, but they have a substance abuse problem, we do not require somebody to be clean and sober to come into shelter. Their behaviors have to be able to be managed in a way that when they're in shelter, that they act accordingly. But we don't breathalyze, we don't do any kind of drug testing, people can come in even though they have barriers. And that is what Housing First means. People can access services without having to mitigate all the barriers that they have. And so that really is the guide to our approach of service delivery here in the city. So I wanted to talk a little bit about how we organize our work. So the homeless services role under the DHMP is we are the lead agency for the continuum of care. If you see those top three circles, federal, city, and state funding comes into our system, and we, as a community, oversee that funding in terms of a coordinated effort. We manage, coordinate, and monitor all of the funding that comes then through our lead COC. Coordinated entry is then part of what happens, and Pam's going to talk at length about that, so I won't go into details about that. We also have homelessness prevention, which keeps people from coming into the homeless services system by doing diversion techniques. Pam will talk a little bit more about that. We manage the HRC and all the service delivery that happens in and through that. And then we also run the family shelter at the HRC. Outreach is the group, the team that goes out into the community, engages those unsheltered persons that are in the, on the street, and then we do some resource development. So you can see at the bottom, those three dots at the bottom, city agencies, faith community, nonprofits, they, they also coordinate with us on this effort. And then Beach Community Partnership is the coalition that works together to make this happen. We do governance through that, and we do performance monitoring and program and service delivery. So these are some of our Beach community partners. It has been a group that has, again, been together, many of you, as you look at this list, and I won't read it for you, will know some of these partners. They have been involved for many years. Some of them are new to us. I do want to mention that the governing board provides insight, leadership, and direction on homeless services in our system, and they really provide governance under this beach system. And I'll talk a little bit further about that in my ending comments. So my last slide before I ask Pam to join me here is on the types of resources that we have available. So we provide financial assistance, permanent housing and shelter, day support, basic assistance, consists of showers, laundry, housing support, clothing, ID, financial assistance, bike shop, the LGBT plus community youth meetings, there's food, meals, and health services. What I want to say is that is not provided just by my team at the DHMP, it is provided by that collaboration I talked to you about of community partners that does it. For instance, meals and food are provided on the weekends by our partners at the oceanfront when the HRC is closed. So just so that you know, those kinds of things are happening, showers are provided as well through Penn Ministries. Let me introduce Pam Shine. She is our homeless services administrator, and she literally knows this work inside and out, and I thought it would be great to invite her and to share with you. Between Pam and I, we have 40 years of experience working in the homelessness services system. So when you ask questions, I'm hopeful that we can answer your questions as quickly as, as we possibly can. There you go, Pam.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, city council members, Mayor Dyer and City Manager Duhaney. The, within the global system of care that Director Hill just described, lies our coordinated entry system. Our coordinated entry system is a streamlined system that provides quick access to individuals and families seeking assistance through a coordinated referral and housing placement process. There are three ways to access shelter. The first is our Housing Resource Center, a one-stop-shop facility. We have walk-in hours, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. The Housing Resource Center offers other connections throughout the building with the resources that lived in that building, but it also offers a in-person, face-to-face experience for individuals that are experiencing a housing crisis. The second access is calling the regional crisis hotline operated by four kids. It's open Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And our third access point is our street outreach team, which brings the coordinated entry system to those that are living on the streets or in encampments and cannot visit the HRC or have a workable phone to call the hotline. Oh, I have done something I wasn't supposed to do. There you go. Got it back. Okay. So after households connect to the system, there is a screening or triage assessment that is administered to determine the type of housing crisis a household is experiencing. These types are established, and they are required by HUD. And the reason why we adopt these definitions into our system is because HUD provides the federal funds to support most of our permanent housing programs in our system through the continuum of care, which is about $2 million. So there are three categories of homelessness per HUD's definition. Category one are households that are literally homeless, which means they are living on the street or in an encampment or in a place not meant for human habitation, such as a car. Category two, households who are imminently losing housing within 30 days. These households are coming from a traditional lease arrangement, and they are facing eviction, or they have been in a shared housing situation with a family or friend, and they have been asked to leave, or they're at a hotel and they can no longer pay the hotel cost. And then category four are households that are fleeing domestic violence. So in the chart that you see is a visualization of how households flow through our coordinated entry system. So households at the top, they're experiencing a housing crisis. The first that you see is homelessness prevention, that's the category two of homelessness, where we immediately connect them to prevention services. And I just want to stop here just for a second to thank the council for appropriating additional $100,000, so my team can do the amazing work that they do in swimming upstream and preventing households from experiencing homelessness. And then you see the victims of domestic violence or human trafficking, that's the category four, and we immediately refer them to our victim's service provider, who is Samaritan House. And then you see the exploring options and the assessment. And that process is mainly for our category one, literally homeless households. This is a, what we do is we connect them to our diversion strategies, a diversion specialist. This is a new strategy we implemented about three years ago, and the goal of diversion is to help the individual find safe, alternative housing immediately, rather than going into shelter or waiting on a list. Outcomes of diversion may include staying with family or friends on a permanent or temporary tenure, or negotiated terms from their previous housing arrangement, or connections to market rent properties. This strategy helps to preserve finite system resources to those who are most in need of them. Households who are unable to be diverted are assessed and triaged for shelter. Veterans, as you see, are connected to transitional housing, and all of the households that are unable to be diverted are placed on our prioritization list. Housing providers that are participating in the coordinated entry system are providing or reporting their vacancies on a daily basis to the coordinated assessment team. And when there is a housing vacancy, it triggers a case conferencing, which you see at the bottom of that, of that cone. The case conferencing meeting includes housing providers, outreach workers, behavioral health providers, to ensure the most vulnerable household is connected to that housing vacancy. And the green shows all of the ways households can exit the coordinated entry system. They can exit through family and friends, through that diversion strategy. They can exit through permanent supportive housing and wraparound housing, which I will talk about in a few minutes. They can exit through market rent rentals. These are individuals or households, they have an income, they're earning money, but they just can't save up enough to get them connected to a rental property, like the security deposit and first month's rent. And we can provide that shallow subsidy for them so they can connect to housing immediately. And then households exit through subsidized housing programs like our SROs and our voucher So connections to housing and shelter does not happen on a first-come, first-served basis. We used to do that. We no longer do that method of determining who gets the next housing or shelter spot. We use an evidence-based assessment tool to determine the needs and the severity of those needs, which we call acuity. The tool used is the Services Prioritization Decision Assistance Tool, which looks at several life domains, such as mental health, the history of homelessness, substance use, health and wellness, and legal issues. There is a scoring system embedded into that tool. The higher the score, the higher their acuity. Households with high acuity are prioritized for housing. The tool also helps match the households to the appropriate type of housing programs, which we'll talk about later in the presentation. The prioritization for shelter is individuals that are 65-plus years of age, individuals that are grappling with medical vulnerabilities that makes them susceptible to dying on the streets, families with children ages zero to five years of age. And we just added this new criteria of prioritizing individuals who are living in an encampment and have been given a notice to vacate. We are able to refer the most vulnerable household on the prioritization list to shelter the same day the provider reports a vacancy. There are two reports we review to determine the number of households experiencing homelessness in our community and the effectiveness of our system to end homelessness. The first report is point in time count, as Director Hill mentioned, which is our annual enumeration of households experiencing shelter and unsheltered homelessness conducted by our amazing volunteers and staff. Point in time represents a profile of the scope of homelessness in our community. It does not capture the full story. HUD uses this to determine our performance in reducing homelessness. And although, as you can see, there was a significant decrease in 2018, but in 2019, we began to incrementally experience an increase. However, this year in 2023, we experienced a decrease, although not a population level decrease, mind you, but we are trending in the right direction. The second report comes from our real-time data, as households are entering that coordinated entry system and exiting it. So in 2022, we were able to see that 1,380 households who were category one literally homeless entered the coordinated entry system. 17% exited to permanent housing. 23% remained on the prioritization list at the end of the year and rolled over to the next year. And 60% became inactive. And what we mean by that is we were unable to maintain contact with them for 30 consecutive days. So our contact attempts consist of every week we're calling families, and every two weeks we're calling singles. It's when we can no longer make contact 30 consecutive days that they're rendered inactive, and they're, and we exit them from our coordinated entry system. Our current prioritization list has 366 households that are currently literally homeless. This is inclusive of both sheltered and unsheltered. Out of the 366, 243 are verified as homeless, and 150 are verified as unsheltered, and 93 are sheltered. And what we mean by verified is that immediately when we cannot divert a household from experiencing unsheltered homelessness, they are connected to our amazing outreach team, and they work with that individual to verify their state of homelessness. We look at this report, we call it a system activity report, on a quarterly and annual basis to determine if we are reducing system inflow of households experiencing homelessness and increasing the outflow from the system of households connecting to permanent housing year over year. For the purpose of this presentation, we review our system challenges through two lens. One, our ability to provide immediate shelter when someone cannot be diverted from unsheltered homelessness, and our ability to, to provide housing in a quick and timely manner. So we look at shelter first. So right now, we have about 176 shelter beds in our system. We have 55 beds that are dedicated to single men and women. We have 40 beds that are dedicated to families with minor children. Those 40 beds equates to about 10 rooms for families. We have 53 beds for victims of domestic violence. We have 10 beds for youth ages 18 to 24. We have 16 beds for veterans in transitional housing, and we have two beds for veterans' emergency housing placement assistance. Winter shelter brings in an added capacity of 60 beds between the months of November and March. On average, monthly, we have about 150 households that are unsheltered in our community. About 85% of our unsheltered population are singles, and as noted on the left, we have about 85, sorry, 83 emergency shelter beds for singles, when you calculate the number of adult, single adult beds, youth beds, and veteran beds. Shelter is always full. We have a total of 818 permanent beds in our system, and there are three types of permanent housing beds. The first one is permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing brings in permanent subsidy and the intensive case management support. We target permanent supportive housing to the households with the highest acuity, they have to have a disabling condition, and they typically have the longest length of homelessness. We have 367 of those beds in our system. 67% of those beds are dedicated to veterans through our HUD VASH program. 30% are dedicated to the general population. 2% are dedicated to households that are grappling with HIV or AIDS, and 1% of youth ages 18 to 24. The second type of permanent housing beds is our other permanent housing. It provides medium to long-term subsidy, and it also provides a moderate level to intensive case management services. We target that intervention to the households with a high acuity. We have 231 of those beds, and all of them are allocated to the general population, and they are our SROs and our voucher programs. And then our third type of permanent housing is rapid rehousing. It brings in short to medium-term financial assistance and a moderate level of intensity of case management, and we target it to the moderate acuity population, and we have 220 of those beds. 64% are dedicated to victims of domestic violence, 10% for veterans, and 6% for LGBTQ population, and 20% for, 25% for the general population. 45% of our prioritization list assesses for permanent supportive housing, and about 55% assess for rapid rehousing. One of the main thoughts that goes into tragic, strategic planning and trying to right-size our system to meet the housing needs is how many beds do we need to effectively address homelessness? A best practice approach to that answer is given from a consulting agency that we've partnered with in the past, which has the, which holds the logic that for every shelter bed you have in your system, you need six permanent housing beds. When we apply that logic, we would need an additional 418 permanent housing beds to effectively meet the needs that are coming into our system. So we do face significant challenges in our community in really moving the needle on making homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring. The first challenge is our federal and state funds. Although we appreciate the continuum of care funds, we could not do this work without the $2 million that we received through HUD, but it does come with restrictions on who you can serve and how you can serve them. Not everybody will fit into that square peg. Individuals with severe mental illness or inactive or active in their substance use can sometimes be very challenging to engage and navigate them through the system. Personal choice, so people have agency and therefore are free to make their own decision on how they want to layer their lives. And sometimes that means they are self-determined not to engage or even connect to housing. We respect their decision, but we continue to engage through outreach with the hope that the person-centered, meaning people where they are, approach will cause a shift in their thinking and want to become housed again. And we also are always challenged by the impact of homelessness at the oceanfront. And we also have an increase in panhandling. will cause a shift in their thinking and want to become housed again. And we also are always challenged by the impact of homelessness at the oceanfront. And we also have an increase in panhandlers, which from unscientific surveys seems to be more of a poverty issue than a homelessness issue. And of course, the increase in visibility of encampments is a phenomenon not only we are experiencing, but it's being experienced by many communities across America. One of the things that we have done, as previously stated, is that we have prioritized those who are living in an encampment and received a notice to vacate to come into shelter, to be connected to shelter and other services. Unfortunately, we hear a no more than we hear a yes to the offer of shelter. Individuals who are finding living in an encampment, they are creating community in the encampment, they feel a sense of belonging in the encampment. We do not have the capacity to bring into shelter non-service animals and allow them to have an animal. And we also do not have the capacity to store their personal belongings. And these are all of the feedback that we have been receiving from our individuals, our neighbors who are living in an encampment as to the reason why shelter is not an attractive option for them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. I will continue to close this out about what we can do. So as Pam indicated, we need to understand the, enhance our data system. As you heard, our current housing capacity is 818 beds and so we want to be able to impact that greater. And the way to do that, of course, by analyzing our results and our performance is to address the affordable housing supply versus the need. She mentioned the numbers for you earlier. We want to improve our service system and of course, the way we do that is to reduce that inflow with prevention and increase the outflow through permanent housing, as she discussed. We want to, of course, develop new resources to address the needs, not only the federal resources. We do receive state funding. We have been blessed to receive great city funding, but we need to increase that ability. And then, of course, cultivate new partnerships. There is a finite number of nonprofits that help us and we would like to increase that capacity so we have others that are helping us with this journey. So how are we addressing these challenges and concerns? So if you look at that first top column, we, in the 2024 budget, there were 30 beds expansion. There was funding approved for 30-bed expansion at the, at the HRC. The goal is to have that by the beginning of the year if all goes well and we will then increase our capacity from 55 beds at the HRC to 85 beds. Those 30 additional beds will be just for single males. That is the greatest need in our system, so that is what we're doing. In your packet of information, you received a landlord engagement flyer. We are doing a very strategic targeted approach of providing new incentives to landlords to see if they will work with us with this population that sometimes is difficult to house because of that rent history and all of the issues that happen with people that have experienced homelessness or are at risk of homelessness. And then the city has contributed $1 million home through my department as well as the city ARPA money towards JCOC's campus. That will give us 38 new permanent supportive housing units and we expect that to be completed September of 2024 and that will be great. Those will have, all 38 of those will have project-based vouchers in them. So the voucher will stay with the unit. And so if a person leaves, they can request after a year their own housing choice voucher and that voucher will stay with the unit. So it will keep that affordable for years to come. So the, a second concern has to do with our eligibility limitations that Pam mentioned. And so that extra $100,000 that she thanked you for is really going to help us with prevention and diversions. It costs much, much less to keep somebody housed than it is to bring them into the system because then you have to do first month's rent, deposits, all the thing that goes with that. So if we can keep them housed and work with them when they're current landlord, it's, it's much better in terms of their home as well as the funding. We also have VB Home Now, which is a foundation that's tied to the HRC and they actually give us funding every year and have increased that this year. We just, and will, and, and every year they've been increasing the amount that they give us to continue to do this work. But we also need to look at other resources and funding opportunities. So we mentioned the mental health and the substance abuse issue. I recently convened a multidisciplinary outreach effort, particularly, excuse me, I'm speaking about the, the encampment issue, but I'll mention this here first. Pam has done this multidisciplinary outreach effort. So it includes homeless outreach and peer recovery mental health staff. So twice a week, people from behavioral health with our outreach team go out into the community, to the unsheltered population and are engaging with them. For people that are trained, when, when somebody has a severe mental illness and they need services, they're going right to them same day, immediate access. So that's wonderful. We talked about the personal choice in outreach and engagement, but I also wanted to share that, that we have two new housing specialist positions in the homeless services division that you guys approved for this year that will actually be for our prevention and diversion team. One will be a housing special assistance, specialist assistant, and the other will be for our tenant-based rental assistant team lead. And that's part of that diversion funding that we talked about. So the other things we're addressing are the impact of unsheltered homelessness at the oceanfront. And so the great thing about this is what we're doing in terms of the targeted housing voucher program. So we have 30 of our emergency housing vouchers that we have received, that we're funding through ARPA treasury funding, will go for that, those, those persons experiencing homelessness at the oceanfront so we can target them and get them into housing. We also, this have coordinated with VBTPD and the resort management office at the oceanfront. And then our outreach team has flexible hours so they can come and go and they, as needed, particularly in the summer, last year, we actually had weekend hours when we needed it so people could go down there. Pam mentioned panhandling. We installed 30 give-get-help signs at the oceanfront last year. And there is a QR code to the beach website and to the hotline number. I pulled the data from that. From January 1 to May 31 of 2023, we had 2,031 new visitors to our website and 321 returning visitors, which was a 30% increase of new visitors and a 25% increase in returning visitors. So we're know, we know that people are actually using that resource. We're excited about that. For the panhandling pilot that Ms. Wooton District is putting up, there will be three intersections that will have the, the sign. And we did that based on data of people that actually were seen panhandling or outreach engaged in that, in those areas. And the sign will say, "Give to many, not just one. Please do not encourage panhandling. Support a local charity." And then the QR code will direct them straight to our Beach Community Partnership website. And then the, the crease, increased visibility of encampments, I think we've talked about. That was a multidisciplinary group that we just, two months ago, engaged with. It contains housing, parks and rec, land cave services, the police department, the city attorney's offices, human services, planning, zoning, public works, CMS and fire. And what we're doing is we're coming together and we're working on a, developing a response strategy. So when an encampment is identified, how we as a multi-departmental team will engage it. And we have already put together a draft of that and are encouraged by what we're hearing from the team. We also have in the 2024 budget, there was $25,000 that was appropriated for cleaning homeless in campus. That does not go to my department, but Parks and Rec actually does that cleanup. But that was really something that was greatly needed, so we're excited about that. So I would be remiss if I didn't talk about our successes. Pam talked about our point in time count. I wanted to point out that we have seen some decreases. Our first-time homelessness, that's our prevention team. We've seen a 9% decrease. Our total unsheltered and sheltered homeless, there was an 11% decrease. Chronic homelessness, you do see an 8% increase in 2023, but since 2029, there's been a 39% decrease. So we're trending in the right direction there. Family homelessness, 39% decrease. Youth homelessness, 34% decrease and homeless veterans, a 12% decrease. There is a flyer in your packet that has the takeaways of our point in time that you can look at that further. Our, what I wanted to say, speak here too was about this chronic homelessness population. That, those are our most vulnerable, the hardest to serve. And so the fact that that ebbs and flows as we talked about is not surprising because it takes multiple engagements to, to move those people into housing. So there's a couple of more efforts that I wanted to share with you about how we're going to enhance our system. We have, to enhance our outreach program, we are going to bring on a Show the Way app. It will have real-time data capture for engagements, contacts, and surveys. And it's an app on a phone that not only can our outreach team use it, but other departments can use it, police, EMS. It will make it much more effective. A referral will go in and with 24 hours, our team can then go out to that encampment, which will make it great. It's a case management tool and the, it, it will have an assessment for the encampments on it. So there can actually be an assessment of how, excuse me, serious this encampment is based on some criteria and then we can prioritize that encampment versus another that we may find. Excuse me. Additionally, we will have, the public will have an access to the directory of resources. You have in your packet as well, the Pocket Pal resource, which is what we will put on this, on this Show the Way app. We hope that to be available in late summer of 2023. The Committee of One update is that strategic plan to end homelessness. It was supposed to be updated in 20, or it ended in 2020, but with the pandemic, we did not get the opportunity because we were shifted because of other priorities with, during the pandemic to update it. But there have been two stakeholder meetings that are measuring the progress and identifying needs. There's, on June 28, there's going to be a food and a feedback forum for persons with lived experience. And we're really adding that DEI lens to this strategic plan this year to make sure that we're incorporating diversity, equity, and inclusion. That, we also, we're going to develop a draft plan and have public feedback and hopefully we'll have it done by summer of 2023. And, you're wonderful. Thank you. And then we'll have it for your consideration in fall of 2023. I wanted to give you thebeachcommunitypartnership.org/hollessness website. I mentioned it in the QR code. I mentioned it on the panhandling. That is actually the website where we're actually, actually asking everybody to go. So I wanted to thank you for this opportunity, but I also wanted to share that there are two opportunities for council input. One is in collaboration with our homeless servanist governance system, our beach governing board. We just updated the bylaws and we would love to invite two representatives to, of city council to be members on that governance committee to give us input and to help us make good decisions around homelessness. And then I would love to offer an opportunity for anyone who would like a tour of the HRC to come get a tour and to learn and see firsthand of the services that are happening there. And finally, I would be remiss if I did not give you a phone number and we can send it out as well, but the outreach number is something that anybody could contact. It's 757-385-5165. If somebody sees somebody in an encampment and they don't, don't know what to do, they can call that number. Or the HRC number is 757-385-5167. We just asked that you provide a good description of the location of the encampment and then we could dispatch an outreach team within 24 hours to engage with those persons.
Thank you, Michael.
You're very welcome.
Thank you to Ms. Hill and Ms. Shine and your entire team for preparing this briefing. I think the council remembers I asked for this briefing a couple of weeks ago while we were having a council conversation about the issue of homelessness in Virginia Beach and the related impacts on our neighborhoods and communities and residents. And I, I think the reason that we had that conversation, I'm sure, was because we're hearing increasingly from our constituents, from Virginia Beach residents who are experiencing the impacts associated with homelessness in our community. And they're looking toward the council and to the City of Virginia Beach as an organization to provide leadership on this issue, both on a compassionate side and on a public safety side and a quality of life side as well. And I think all of those things work well together. But before we move forward with developing new policies or changing policies or appropriating resources or redirecting resources, I think it was so important to have a level set so that we have a better understanding and the public, most importantly, has a better understanding of what the city has been doing, what the city is doing now and what your plans are for the future. And I think you really just hit the bull's eye with this presentation today. And I thank you both and all the people who are associated with preparing it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lucci.
Well, I really mean that very sincerely because it prepares us, and by us, I mean all of us as a community, for the next steps in moving forward. I'd like to make a couple of points and then I'd like to ask you a couple of questions if that's okay. I'd like to just point out on slide 10, the variety of nonprofit partners who are associated with, with this entire sort of continuum of services and care. And I think that's, and I won't, you know, don't need to wait. I'll move on to make that point. But it's just a long list of nonprofit partners, compassionate people, loving people, people of faith, people who love their neighborhoods and their, and, and the, in the city they live in, who are helping our neighbors and helping the people who are less fortunate. And so lots of services are available, not only provided by the city through federal resources, but also through those nonprofit partnerships. On slide 11, you actually went in and, and more precisely shared those, those lists of resources that, and the types of resources that are available and they are robust. And, and I appreciate that. Some of the challenges that I see though, and it was part of the impulse for me, you know, requesting this briefing, was around kind of understand, look at that list. I mean, and, and what does that list represent? That list represents not just, you know, those are organizations comprised of hundreds and dozens and possibly thousands of people and parishioners and it's just an amazing group. And here's the types of resources that are available. So there's lots of resources available. We do not suffer from a lack of resources in Virginia Beach. I think if anything, it's about connecting those resources more effectively. And so that's one of our challenges, but that's a challenge, that's a challenge for every community. But I think we really need to understand what those resources are available. But one of the things that I've been hearing is people contact me all the time and say, I see a person panhandling or I see a person who I believe is experiencing homelessness and we need to get that person help. And one of the things that, that I think would be useful for those people who are reporting those individuals and it from, from, for us as a body, is some transparency around what happens next. How do we report back in terms of what the outreach techniques? And, and not necessarily a result, because one of the things that's come up in my experience is, and Ms. Shine has, I think articulated this extremely well, is there are privacy issues. We, we're not able to report back to the reporting citizen every detail of their case for understandable reasons. But at the same time, I think we need to, to be transparent about, we're making progress. This, this is what we can report and thank you for sharing this information with us. And that's kind of standardizing that, I think would be really helpful for council members and for the community. and for the community. And then I really want to talk about encampments. And I won't spend a lot of time talking about the specific encampments that I'm familiar with in District 3, but they do have a negative impact on our community. They are a health hazard from a sanitary point of view. They are just completely filled with, they're environmental concern. They are completely filled with trash. I had the privilege of going with Councilmember Holcomb to visit an encampment along with members of city staff. And as I've said that day and ever continue to say, I believe that if we were able to peel back that curtain of forest that shrouds that encampment, citizens would be angry if they saw the level of, really, how nasty it is, to put it bluntly. And we need to figure out a way to clean up those encampments and dissuade people from forming those encampments in a compassionate way. And that has to be a priority, and we have to clean them up. I don't think $250,000 is enough to clean up every, I'm sure it's not enough to clean up every encampment within the city. But encampments are a huge problem, and I think we need to also be transparent with the public around what are our legal, what can and can't we do? Because as you noted, I think you said it very elegantly, Ms. Hill, people have, how did you say it?
Detroit.
Have agency.
Agency, yeah.
And I respect that, too. And they may have agency, and they do. Individualism is a hallmark of our American culture, but we can't let those encampments fester within our communities. I'm getting reported about people fearful for their children. I'm getting reports about theft. And so, all of those things. So we need a cohesive response to not only address the existing ones, but prevent future encampments from forming. And then, and at the same time, having a compassionate approach. So that's one of my questions. Then I have one more, and then I'll stop talking. How do you strike the balance? How do you propose striking the balance between compassion, kindness, all those virtues, and the firmness needed so that Virginia Beach does not become, I just returned today from San Diego, San Diego was on the list, as a huge percentage of homelessness per capita. How do you strike the balance of compassionate care and response and do not let Virginia Beach turn into San Francisco, New York City, Washington DC, San Diego, or any number of communities? What's the philosophical approach or best practice in that regard?
I'll start, Ruthie. And to Councilmember Lucci, your points are correct and on point. I think you also, you mentioned the conditions that hold concerns. There's also a public safety concern as well. A lot of times, there's unmanaged fires, improvised cookware that could lead to fire safety concerns that it's not in the address location. So when we get calls, our public safety, our fire department doesn't know exactly where to go, so it could lead to more concerns that way. I think we are trying to find the right balance to strike on this, and I think you're right. It's a combination of empathy, outreach, and enforcement. The big thing that we struggle with, and we are seeing some successes and decreases, but we don't have enough shelter space. You know, but we do have a process where we give notice, right? We typically give about a 72-hour notice whenever we find an encampment after we send our outreach workers out to help them get connected with shelter, if shelters available, and the different wraparound services as well. And the 72-hour notices, in 72 hours, you need to vacate the property. And we use our public safety folks and other resources to help move them along to different locations. Sometimes what that means is that they disperse from one location and move to another location, and then that process repeats over and over again. I think the big thing that we need to find an answer for is more shelter space, and that's the hardest thing, I think, that the hardest obstacle that we have as a city to help work with our community partners to figure that out as well. But we are trying to find that right balance, you know, and I empathize, which you and I understand from seeing what's happening to a lot of our partners on other East Coast cities and West Coast cities, and I would hate for that to become our city as well because we won't be able to control it without good enforcement and good outreach and good resources, like additional shelter space. Ruth, is there anything you want to add?
I think you did a beautiful job. Thank you.
I mean, I would just challenge you on that, though, just, Mr. Duhany, and then I'll stop. I'll save my other question for later. Is more shelter space the answer? Because you could do a case study. For example, I think San Francisco has built lots of shelter space, including allowing tent encampments, and yet the problem continues to compound. So how can you tell us respectfully that more shelter space is the answer when we've seen examples of other communities who have created more and more and more and more shelter space, and then we've just become a destination for homelessness because we've become known as the place where the shelter space is expanded and available? So we could never, we will exhaust all our resources providing shelter space, and that's the balance I'm looking for.
I'll just chime in on that. And my concern with the inadequacy of shelter space is that if you don't have enough shelter space, you can end up with a DOJ consent decree on you that then puts limits on you in even being able to give notice to encampments. And that's what's currently going on in like San Diego, New York, and Chicago, is that since they don't have adequate shelter space, they are not even permitted to give notice to vacate, and they have to allow people to take over parks and other public spaces and sidewalks and things like that.
So what's the ratio?
I don't know.
DOJ?
I don't know for sure. Usually what happens is you end up with a lawsuit, and then you go to court, and then the court tells you what, what rule to operate under.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, we invested more than $30 million on a, as I'm sure you know, on a Housing Resource Center. And then also have other programs in place. I think it's very safe to say the city has invested generously in shelter programs, so hopefully that doesn't put us in that category. But I appreciate and respect your perspectives.
Thank you. Rosemary, and then Chris, and then Worth.
Thank you for this incredible, comprehensive report. You guys knocked it out of the park. It was truly wonderful. One thing that we haven't really talked too much about is the mental illness piece to this, and Michael touched on those people who don't want the help, and all of that is tied with mental health illness. Do you have any idea the percentage of homeless that has mental health issues?
I couldn't span. Do you know anecdotally, off the top of your head?
So we have about 45% of our households that disclose some type of mental illness.
So 45% of those that disclose, and our assessments say that they have an issue with mental illness.
Almost 50%, you know? And we have a double-edged sword here, which we've touched on because you've got the compassion of taking care, but not everybody wants to go, not everybody wants help. And that's the frustration that some of our citizens are having, or they see these people who are homeless, and they would like for them to have help, and they feel, well, we heard from the lady last week, they feel threatened, unsafe, it's disturbing to them. So you've got, you know, it's a real issue of they don't want the help, but yet it's intimidating to other people. So the other thing is, and Worth could probably talk about this a lot better, there's a oceanfront homeless task force that they're doing really nice work, and that maybe we should consider that to be, to expand it for a citywide task force. Because homelessness is not just at the oceanfront. Maybe Worth might want to touch base on that, but.
Let me speak to that. So that is the Oceanfront Coalition, and that is a committee under the Beach Community Partnership that I mentioned. And so that is just concentrating on the oceanfront, but the bigger group concentrates on homelessness across the city, which is why I mentioned that where the representation from the council would be most beneficial would be on the governing board, because then it touches all of it, not just the oceanfront. So we already have a means. It's that Beach Governing Board under the Beach Community Partnership, so.
Ruthie, I think that's the same group that's reviewing the Housing First Plan for amendments or council considerations.
Correct. It's all under the same umbrella. Yes, sir.
So anyway, homelessness is not just at the oceanfront. As we all know, it's citywide. So however, we can coordinate that, do better reach those things. So I think we need to really also pay attention to this mental health piece. And then Amelia and I had the opportunity, was it last week?
Yeah.
Last week. Centerra is looking at doing a mental health crisis intervention center.
Right.
So it'll be a walk-in place to help, and I sent it to you, Michael. And it looks like it may be at Bayside Centerra, where they can have a creative space to help people that are, a triage, people that are having illnesses, and they have no place to go, and they don't know what to do. So this will be a really, really good thing for our city. They, we're interested in coming and speaking to the council. Maybe we could either do it later, but they may at one point want our support with a resolution or something. But this could be, it's not going to solve the problem, but it's another piece to that mental health issue, especially to help with maybe some of the homeless things as well. But anyway, thank you for such a fantastic job.
You're welcome.
You and Pam.
I do want to highlight the integrated team that's working, the PATH outreach workers that are persons with clinical experience on mental health, go out with our outreach team. But as you mentioned, Vice Mayor Wilson, you know, if somebody can't be TDO'd or EC o'd, I'm sorry, I'm talking manacular, they can't be emergency detained because of their illness, they are asked, an assessment is asked to them, and if they're not at a danger to themselves or society, then there's nothing that anyone can do, either police or a mental health provider, because that person has rights, it's a voluntary service model, just like Homeless Services is? Yes, thank you. And Ms. Shelby Giles from Department of Human Services is here. If you want further information, I asked her to come and sit if that came up, because she can go into much more detail about what their services are. But we do coordinate with them.
It's part of living in America.
Yes, ma'am.
We want freedom, and we all have it.
And, Ms. Mayor, I do want to clarify to the council that if somebody is violating law or breaking the law, Chief Nudigay and the command staff and I've had that conversation, and they are enforcing the law. I think the hard time, I think, is, as you know, Councilmember Vice Mayor, you and I talked about it last week, it's the police have to witness the crime. And in the particular situation in your district, the team actually gave a notice to vacate, then the person moved up the street, and then we had to issue another notice to vacate as well. But if we see that a crime is being broken, the police will enforce the law, and they do it in collaboration with the integrated approach and our homeless outreach workers as well. But we won't stand for laws being broken in our community.
Chris, did you have something?
No, sir. Sorry.
Okay, Worth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Hill, and your team. We do indeed, thank you for the presentation, because it does outline so much that's done. But I do have a couple of questions that do question this, and that's, number one, the Housing Resource Center, see that it's open Monday through Friday. What about any consideration to opening, keeping it open over the weekend, Saturday and Sunday? I know it's probably at an extra cost, but homelessness does not just stop Monday through Friday.
Well, as I mentioned, we do have our nonprofit providers that provide services during the weekends, and we never have, it's obviously a consideration that we could take back and do an assessment of the cost and let you know. Yeah.
Thank you. And then second of all, so to maybe quantify the amount of unsheltered, so I think the report here, you say 150 currently on a short-term basis are not housed. And then with the addition of, the expansion of the Housing Resource Center of 30, and the addition of the JCOC's 38, that's 68, so we're still short maybe 70 or 80 beds. Would that be a fair estimate of what would be unsheltered, or?
So the calculation that we calculated was we need approximately 400 additional permanent bed solutions to meet the need. Because as you know, shelter is a temporary solution. Once you put them into shelter, we have to have then the beds to put them in for a permanent solution, so.
Right. I got the difference.
Yeah.
But I just, again, want to thank everybody on your team, because it's a national issue, and it is compassion for our city to take care of those who are all one or two paychecks or healthcare crisis away from being homeless.
Thank you.
Rocky, and then Amelia.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. If I could go back to page nine, Slide 17, right there, the youth, youth 18 to 24, 10 beds. Where are those beds located, those 10 beds? Do you know off the top of your head?
They are in our community with our providers. They are not at the HRC.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And Amelia?
Thank you again for this presentation. It was important, and it was good talking to you early in the week, yes, to do with Rosemary and the mental. The first thing that struck me was your title, Making Homelessness Rare, Brief and Nonrecurring. Do you think that is, that can really happen?
Yes.
For Virginia Beach?
So if you look back at the slide, absolutely, we're doing our best to do, to work on prevention techniques, which is what rare means. And then brief is we're shortening the length of time they stay, moving them out of homelessness into housing as quickly as possible. And nonrecurring, if we get people stabilized into housing, then they won't resitivate back into homelessness. So sure, I mean, that's why we call it, we're not ending it, we're making it rare, brief, and nonrecurring. So we absolutely believe that it's doable. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The other thing I wanted, you've mentioned about beds. And recently, someone brought me a situation where there was a mother with, I think she has four or five or six children, ages from one year old to just, no, four months. And her concern was not being able to be together. I don't know if we addressed, because that's a family thing, where you have, you know, like you're trying to get more beds for the Housing Resource, but you said beds for men. What are we doing now? Because in the housing, we did areas for families, but what more are you doing for a family like that? The mother's capable of working, but she has from four months on, so for childcare and all of that, she cannot do both, and would love to be able to keep all of her children as a family together. Do we look at that situation at all?
Yes, ma'am. So if somebody is in a housing crisis, so they're housed, but they're precariously housed, they may be losing it, they can walk into the HRC Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday from 8:00 to 12:00, and they will immediately be met with a housing specialist who will sit down and do an assessment of their situation and begin to ask them all the questions. If they find that they're precariously housed, and they will work with them, look at their budget, determine what needs to happen, and help them make choices to help them find a housing that's suitable for them and their needs. So that happens every day through our prevention and diversion team.
Okay, because she's in a hotel, one room.
Yeah. She just needs to contact the Housing Resource Center or walk in, and our team will help work with her.
And I think, Councilmember Dr. Ross Hammond, that's some of the diversion money that they may qualify for. In addition, the Human Services Department can help them out with any kind of income supplements that they may qualify for as well. So that's one of the things that they help them when they do, the housing specialists, they try to figure out how, what other resources are there available to help them navigate the situation.
Right. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else with this, Sabrina?
Go back, Ms. Hill, can you go back to the slide that talks about the app, please?
I might be past this. Right there, the last one. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to just double check, because in talking about the development of this app, and I did reiterate that conversation with the city manager, wanted to make sure that we also had that we also have, or that the app is helpful to people who need services. So oftentimes, when I come in contact with people who are experiencing homelessness, they have a cellphone. And I think what helps is that they can access information where resources are, where they can get a hot meal, where they can take a shower, transportation, and other partners that are associated with this program that just helps make things a bit easier so that they can connect to the resources that we have. And so I, I hope that that will be an item on the list to help develop this.
It absolutely will. That's one of the reasons for the delay, is we reached out to the vendor and asked if they could put our Pocket Pal on there, and they have to go back into development to figure out how to do it, but they said absolutely they could. So we will have this sheet, which has even a calendar of when you can get a meal ever in the city, what days, what times. It'll all be on there as a access directory for resources for the community.
Wonderful, that's of grave concern for me. And as, as you've mentioned, we do have a very foolproof system, and we have a strategic plan and partners. And I think the staff, as I mentioned last time I spoke, do an excellent job. Certainly more resources to help you will be helpful. Also access to affordable housing, I understand, will be helpful as well. But I would just say, for those individuals who seem to fall through the cracks, because they do, they fall through the cracks, and somehow they don't go through the system, and they need help, and they may be in an emergency situation. I know, because I've spoken to some folks and went through or spent some time on the phone trying to find housing or just temporary shelter for a couple and some other individuals. And so that's my concern, to make sure we're addressing the emergency needs of folks, you know, who you come across, who, you know, don't, or who are unable to access that emergency shelter. And I understand, one of the concerns is the list, the waiting list, because when I asked questions, it was, listen, we have a waiting list. And so we have to help all of these folks before we help someone who may present an emergency need and may require temporary shelter. And so I would just like to make sure, and if anyone has any objection, to make sure we can task the city manager with addressing that waiting list. Try to get that waiting list down so that we can have opportunities and access for folks in those emergency situations. If anyone disagrees with that, certainly speak up and say that you do. But if there aren't any objections to that, I would like to see if we can get that waiting list down somehow, so that we can kind of relieve or take some of those folks off that list, and so we can integrate those who need assistance on an emergency basis. That would be my request.
Okay, Patrick. Then Michael and Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly do not disagree with what Councilmember Wooton says, that's not why I raised my hand. I have a couple of things I'd like to follow up on. The first is, and Vice Mayor Wilson really, I think, brought this up, but it just really, I think I just want to make sure we ran it home. We talk a lot about the issue of mental health. And frankly, I think we need to have another, another briefing like this on the subject of mental health from probably Human Services, because these are correlated. I don't think anyone, just as a casual observer of the individuals experiencing homelessness would say, would be able to say, you know, that many of them are suffering from mental illness, and it's just, it's very obvious. Not being a doctor, I don't think it takes a doctor to see that and to recognize that. It's a major issue, and it absolutely impacts this issue, but so many others. These issues of homelessness we're experiencing not only in Virginia Beach, but across the country, reflect the lack of resources and the failure of, of the system for mental health across the country. I'm not pointing any fingers, certainly at our Human Services Department, who do an excellent job. But it's just our prioritization of resources, our understanding of the issue, the resources that are available, the stigma associated with mental health. All of these things lead ultimately to homelessness, substance use, and worse. And we're looking at people who are at the end of that journey, and we want to make sure we have resources available at the beginning of that journey, so that we don't have our neighbors and friends and family members who end up in an encampment or in the homelessness situation. So I think this really, equally important in this is the issue of, and that's the point Vice Mayor made, but I just want to really drive it home. I also want to recognize one of my great friends, Dr. Anne Straus, who's here. I know Dr. Straus from my days at Handham Road Pride. She is an expert in this area, and we are lucky to have her here with us today. She represents, just, she's one person, represents the thousands of people in the community who have, who lead with compassion and care, and I really respect the work that she does. I know she has some ideas for us around ways that we can provide more shelters, and I'm looking forward to connecting her with Ms. Hill at an appropriate time to explore those things. And so I just didn't want to take the moment to not say hi to my very good and old friend, and also all the people like her who care about this issue and care about the people who live here.
Thank you, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to articulate that staff is doing everything that it can do administratively to work the list and identify shelter space. And we're working with our project partners to bring plans and recommendations to you on what we can do to enhance the city's offerings on that part.
Thank you, Rosemary.
And by adding the extra beds, because you want to help them, which is true, correct.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Yeah, Sabrina.
So if you could, as you've elaborated, Mr. Duhany, if you could provide a report then how you're working or the staff is working to reduce that list, I would like to see that, to make sure that's an ongoing, active, I guess, task to reduce that list. Otherwise, the list, because there are some folks who have been on that list for over 12 months. And so I understand the work, I understand the initiatives that are going forward, but I think what I'm asking is an active way to address it, and a report stating how, how it's being addressed, because it doesn't seem to be really moving or digressing. And so perhaps I may call you in, I don't know, in three or six months, and have a request to help someone. And I'm hoping that that list won't be as large. And so that's the reason I'm asking, for that side, whatever is being done, if I can have a report on how that, that's, that list is being worked on actively, and if it's being reduced in a timely manner. The other thing I'll say is, I'm glad to hear that this plan, strategic plan was brought up that was adopted by council. I asked for a copy of this to be placed at your desk, because we don't have to, of course reinvent the wheel, we just have to update what we have. And I understand that that's taking, that process is going to be done, and that's a good thing to hear, because that's what I was going to suggest. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Hill, for the presentation. Just being a new member on the council, I guess I'm trying to gain a little bit more perspective on the severity of the problem in terms of, you know, just looking back historically. And I see in this 2016 report, we've made some improvements since 2016 in terms of our number of homeless per 10,000. And, and I guess, you know, I know, I know all of us are responsible, you know, to, to our districts, and I'm wondering if we're hearing a lot more of this right now because of, you know, the fact that we're, again, we're a little bit more near to ground, you know, dealing with our district issues. And I want to commend you and your staff for, for your work. There were several encampments that popped up in District Nine, and they were handled with care, coordinated with homeless division staff and public safety, and they gave routine updates and reports, you know, when, when I asked, and we were able to communicate that to the residents who were, who were concerned about the situation. So I guess the long way of asking is, you know, are we seeing more of this now, or is this just kind of coming to our attention now a little bit more than usual? Because it looks like we're doing fairly well compared to, you know, other localities our size.
So if you look also at the point in time count data, we are trending downwards, so we are doing better. I think what has happened, and let me just be really frank with you, in the last six weeks or so, there's been a visibility that you haven't seen. We've had encampments for years, but they've been invisible to the public. When you have people that are on sidewalks and on right-of-ways, in tents, then it becomes a visibility issue, that the community then responds differently. Doesn't mean we haven't had people living in encampments for years. And we don't have a major, the, what we know is we have about 20 encampments known to us in the city. And the numbers fluctuate anywhere from 25 to up to 75 people, depending on how many people are living in community together, as Pam explained. And our outreach team, every Friday, they go, it's encampment day, and they're going to visit every encampment. And during the week, if a new one pops up, they hear about, then they go and gauge that within 24 hours. So I believe our strategy is good. And if you compare the numbers of 460,000 people in our city, we're doing really well. And I'd like to make that, share that perspective. As Councilmember Lucci, I was in San Diego in 2019, Pam and I attended training for the National Alliance to End Homelessness, and we literally walked the streets to venues and had to walk around just literally tents upon tents upon tents upon tents. We're not seeing that in our city. And, and yes, there's a balance, and I agree that there's a balance. But I think we have, we are striking the right balance. The, the collaboration that I talked about is really important, where, you know, we're bringing in all the people that could touch an encampment to the table and talking about it, to include fire, to include EMS, so that we have a, a really strategic approach to how we, we manage that. And we're looking at best practices in other cities and how they're doing it. So it's not just, what do we think? So I think we're, we're trending in the right direction, is, is what I would say to you, Councilwoman Shulman.
Real quick, you said Franklin's in town, okay. Get me on that schedule one day, I'd appreciate it. I'd ride with one of your teams out there if you can get me on the list.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Absolutely, sure.
I think that the fact that the Housing Resource Center opened was the real time that it, you were able to bring it all together. And just remembering over the many years, the things that were being done, but it's being able to have a, one place to go, and now you've got a handle on all this, before it was scattered. I mean, different things being done and so forth, but now that you have it together, you're able to address the total picture. And when you look at those numbers, at least they're not escalating to a great extent, which I think is probably happening in many other places. But you all at least have kept it from increasing, and it's been a tough time since 2018 when you opened. I mean, we've had the biggest challenges in between this time, and I think the fact that you've kept it steady shows that something is working. We just have to make it come down even more now. But I think we're poised to be able to do that. And, and I think you're right, the visibility of these encampments is what has caused the increased concern. But maybe it's also going to lead to our ability to address it more, because other people do see that the problem is there, it's not hidden, and it's not gone away. But I think the very fact that those numbers have not escalated during this really troubling time is just a telling of the success of your, your work there. And we just have a ways to go yet.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, if I could just make a couple of quick points. Yesterday, I had a prolonged conversation with a couple consultants from Virginia Tech on affordable housing. And, you know, discussion came up that perhaps a number of people that are currently homeless now is because they can't find an affordable place to live. And I think that, and we have homeless that are actually working homeless because of, you know, their situation. Now, maybe today I'm in the, you know, the mood for a task force, but one of the things I recommended to the consultants from Virginia Beach is that maybe we put together a task force that really delves in, in, you know, and Councilmember Taylor and I have conversations about really having to aggressively address the affordable housing situation. So perhaps, in fact, you know, a task force that looks at all the barriers, all of the barriers that affect our ability to come up with, you know, public, you know, affordable housing, and also to look at best practices of cities that are really dealing with this, you know, and, you know, to take a comprehensive look, you know, to find out how government can remove barriers and really come up with innovative ideas to look at things. Rosemary?
Well, we've already got the Housing Advisory Board with, I think, three council members are part of that.
Right, but, you know.
Maybe to, and they're up and running on a lot of stuff.
Right, we can definitely include them, but I think we need a special focus thing that looks at a whole thing.
You could task them with that.
Something we can talk about, yes.
My microphone is not working, somebody turn this one off. And Mayor, remember, council in November funded Virginia Tech to revamp the 2016 housing study that's going to look at best practices and the barriers to affordable housing, and they're posed to present and brief council on their research, their findings, and their recommendations in August, right? So ahead of your retreat, you should get that briefing from them about what they're seeing in our community, what they're seeing for housing affordability, research analysis on what other cities are doing, and some best practices and recommendations on what they think Virginia Beach should prioritize to address affordable housing. And I think with, with that information, council could then determine next steps to include possibly a task force for them to review the recommendation that you have.
Review the recommendations and go forward, okay? But I think we got to be proactive in that regard. And, you know, the final thing too, and, you know, we, we've been having initial meetings, you know, with the HOPE initiative that we're launching, and be assured of the focal point of the HOPE initiative is going to be mental health. We identified with a recent task force a year ago that mental health and, you know, Amelia was the chair of the Idea Commission, where mental health was identified as the prominent, you know, situation in Virginia Beach, and that we're going to deal with it. It's not only going to hopefully deal with the violence situation, but it would also apply to homeless situation, PTSD veterans and things of that nature. So be assured that, you know, this is going to be a, you know, council priority going forward. Chris?
Mayor, I was going to hold my comments.
But you stirred them up. Ms. Hill, thank you somewhat, Ms. Hill, for the presentation. I would, I want to go back to kind of Ms. Monica's presentation and HOPE, and suggest that maybe if there's an appetite on the body, to, to make this a part of the strategic planning process, because Monica brought up something very important, the environment. And Barbara, you mentioned, you know, the support and how it's more visible, and we have a big, I have a town hall coming up this Thursday for the migrant housing at the Catholic church, and that kind of touches on Monica's, the environment. And so if we have a policy or, or we make this a priority, because it's, it's, it's mental health, it's the affordable housing crisis, and now we have a politicized piece, which is the housing of migrant children, and this is in District Eight, and so... is in District 8. And so I think it, hopefully, we can have a broad discussion because I'm getting the feedback, I'm getting notes of support. I hear compassion over and over. And it's hard to justify compassion for, let's say, immigrant children. And then how do I answer the question, well, where's the compassion within the faith-based community to house our own locally? So I hope that we can maybe have this discussion as part of the strategic plan, and maybe it'll be a priority amongst this council, but I'm just suggesting that.
Yeah, I can kind of concur with that. And I think, you know, the notion of using these types of strategic plans, you know, as we identify, you know, once again, we got, you know, in this great nation of ours, we've got a changing landscape in a lot of ways. And we have to address, you know, the problem, you know, the problems and the barriers to success as they come up. So I think if we use this training, you know, strategic planning initiative, and we get it, you know, going, and then, you know, once again, I also think it helps play into the budget priorities of what we need going forward. So I do.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Okay, moving on, City Council discussions and, you know, in view of what we're talking about with the need of strategic planning, you know, I think one of the great challenges we're going to face as a city, as a body, going forward is the fact that we're running out of usable land to a large degree. And once again, you know, as we come up and we are confronted and given options that, you know, we're going to have to take, perhaps use some out-of-the-box thinking.
Very microphone.
Uh-oh.
I thought you had.
Okay. But once again, you know, I think that as we explore possibilities, we have to be open to innovation and at least go into detail to figure out if the plan is in fact feasible. So I'm going to recommend after discussion that we at least refer Project Wayne to the Planning Commission, not with the intent that this would lock any council member into voting for it, but to at least explore some of the questions and concerns that have evolved over, to find out about, you know, the drainage situation, traffic situation, and things of that nature. But also to find out if Project Wayne does in fact not come to fruition, you know, would, you know, perhaps a, you know, a new training academy for police to be there, or whatever use might be applicable. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we at least refer it to Planning Commission, get the answers to some of the questions that were asked. And, you know, we went a little bit out of the way, out of our normal thing by having a public hearing even before there was a solid plan put in front of us. And I think what we did successfully was identify, you know, some of the problems and concerns that came up. Quite frankly, I thought former Chief Severa asked a number of questions that, you know, deserve answers. And I think by at least referring it to Planning Commission for potential changes zoning, for whatever is appropriate there. And I think it would help, you know, lay a lot of the questions and concerns. Barbara?
I did double check, and I do have the, go ahead, just to let you know that there is a privately owned property in the right place, with the right infrastructure, with the right comprehensive plan recommendation, and a willing seller for this project. And I believe that staff has contacted the person because they called me, and so, you know, it's, there's an available property, and they're very, the private owner is anxious to be called.
Okay.
Yes, because Barbara and I, you mentioned this to me. But at the same time, I also think, since this Project Wayne has come to the table, that moving it forward through rezoning, just to know.
What's available?
What's available, we also have the choice of what Barbara's just brought to the table.
So what we may have here is a couple possible options that we can examine. Jen?
Thank you, Mayor. I wrote down my thoughts so I would not lose track and not be long-winded. So in taking in a lot of information from what we're hearing through emails, from the public hearing, and our discussions, and in different meetings that I've attended, and when this topic has come up, it seems like the balance here is how do we approach and balance going forward growth and preservation of our city, whether it's developing our economies, developing housing, and also preserving existing plans, existing neighborhoods. And we have a number of decisions coming forward with that question in mind, growth and preservation, and what does that balance look like? The benefits I've heard about the project, which, you know, you know, if it goes forward to planning, we'll get more information, is it economic development, sustainable job growth, it can diversify our economy, we won't be so reliant on the military and on other things, and that can be a benefit to our city. Some of the cons that I've heard are environmental concerns around wildlife, environmental concerns around the process of manufacturing, and also the product that would be manufactured and its long-term impacts on the environment. And also generally, I think a consistent theme that I've heard, I think you all have heard it too, is this idea of preserving the green line and the tradition of that, and how to determine whether or not to change that or not. So in taking in all this information, I was directed to the ITA Plan, and as a District 10 rep, I did want to offer, like for the record, my considerations and my thought on moving the green line. And specifically, I'm going to read it as quickly as I can because it's not very long, page 50 of the document on the ITA Plan from 2017. And it says, "A large parcel is designated for use by the city to develop a new solid waste transfer station, which will replace the existing transfer station at the corner of Concert Drive and Rosemont Road. The land designation provides sufficient space for future city operations, stormwater areas, and perimeter landscape buffer areas that would screen and buffer operations from adjacent land use and city roads. There's a number of anticipated uses, and all of them are listed as serving city service functions." And so, once that was brought to my attention, because the transfer station is in District 10, it gave me pause to reflect on if we were to move forward with this project with all of the considerations and all of the concerns that are attached to it, specifically for District 10, how this decision would impact future planning uses. So some questions that are unanswered for me that I want answers to is have we identified other pieces of land that will satisfy the need to relocate a number of properties that are designated for public uses? Mrs. Henley, and Mayor, you mentioned potentially LEADA transferring the SIPSA plant out of District 10, so that perhaps that site could be utilized for other purposes in my district, and it could continue the, it's located near Operation Smile Life Net, so it's the higher education adult learning center. So there were plans for that site to develop it into a more campus educational thing, and the SIPSA plant, the plan is to relocate it out of that district or out of that place. And so have we determined that the sites that have been identified for relocation no longer need to be moved? And why has that decision been made? And ultimately, what are the opportunity costs for this decision? So, you know, it's a question about public land and public uses. And so I understand the need for economic development, and I'm pro economic development, while also considering its impact to our environment and its impact to our public use, our land that's designated for public use. So I also understand that as our work environment, to Monica's point, Ms. Monica Shapiro's point, that times change, and sometimes plans need to adjust and adapt with it. But I think that those changes need to be made with thoughtful consideration. And so I want that on the record to remind, because I just learned about it, so to inform the body as well, that there were plans for this site that were to serve public use. And I want to remind and elevate those considerations for the benefit of the public.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one of the things, you know, by referring it to Planning Commission, the options, you know, would come out, you know. Once again, I use the term SWOT analysis about what can be done and what, that type of thing. And, you know, yes, and I think, once again, I think it's a duty of a body, and, you know, plans unfortunately change due to circumstances. And I just think as we go up, I think, but, you know, having an outside set of eyes, take a look at and find out what in fact, you know, if in fact, you know, the drainage situation does in fact eliminate, you know, certain, you know, entities from going there. But once again, that's my thought. Worth, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay. Josh?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. And I agree with you that, I mean, good idea, bad idea, or otherwise. I mean, we're presented now with a tremendous economic investment opportunity, economic development opportunity, a job creator. And, you know, I think we owe it to ourselves, and we owe it to the public to be able to answer the questions that have come up between, you know, the time that this was originally floated to us to now. Because, I mean, we can't even say who these people are. We don't know what the building footprint looks like. We don't know, when people ask us about traffic and stormwater concerns, what those impacts might be. And the way to be able to answer those questions is to put it to our planning staff, have it vetted, and go through a process. And there will undoubtedly be multiple public hearings, I would imagine, at both the planning and the council stage, where we could answer those questions, have the public involved. But I think we owe it to ourselves and to the public to treat this economic opportunity very, very seriously, because, you know, we may, we may, we may not have very many more that come our way, depending on how we treat this opportunity. And I think we need to treat it with the diligence and the objective analysis that it deserves.
Chris, and then Barbara, and then Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you just provide clarity, because about what are we, what are you recommending to the body?
You know, that we just refer it to the Planning Commission, you know, for an evaluation, you know, to find out what is feasible to, you know, be put there.
So separate?
Recommend just to change zoning, not the project itself.
So it is a recommendation to change zoning?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I think it's a recommendation to evaluate change.
Evaluate change in the zoning.
And I don't think council's recommending the Planning Commission to rezone. I think there's, what you all are, what I'm hearing is that y'all have a conversation about referring that property.
Right.
Acquisition for them to evaluate the applicant's rezoning request.
Yeah, and then we can then determine if we want to go forward.
All right, so to be clear, the recommendation is for this body to allow the Planning Department to, Planning Commission, to give us a recommendation on whether to rezone the property for Project Wayne.
To industrial, correct.
For industrial.
But also, yeah, I'm, was you going to say something, Mark?
I just.
Okay, but once again, to find what applicable uses are available.
And if that doesn't take place, the only applicable use right now is for it to remain as is. As is, okay. And I guess the next question, and this is coming from the overwhelming responses I received, is what's the rush? Because we were told by Economic Development that this applicant, I think last month, you know, that they were making a decision, have to make a decision out of the fear of loss, sense of urgency. The public has spoken to us, I'm not sure the count, but it seemed to be overwhelmingly in opposition to the rezoning. And when we think about all of the priorities we have, and I do want to stand on Councilwoman Schulman's words and your statement respectfully, is, you know, that we owe it to ourselves. But on April 11th, we had another significant economic opportunity coming before this body, larger in terms of dollar-wise, more jobs. And we said at the time, a strategic delay sometimes is the best option. We have an extreme amount of opposition. I've been lobbied, I've been harassed the last three days by people lobbying for this. I won't say names. And so my concern is, there's an unfair playing field. We don't have time. Capstone, got too much ahead of us. I know, I know, it's a repeat, but that was the precedent. We have Atlantic Park who's still begging for money. We have Rudy Luke that we haven't even had a discussion on, up or down. Have developers emailing us about what's our decision. We just passed a budget, have collective bargaining. So I know there is a probably broad support for this, but I don't know what kind of jobs, how much they pay. And if they're not $100,000 jobs, with the average home in your district, this is Henley at, right now, about $475,000 with all the new construction, where are they going to live? So my question is, what's the rush? And if we've given this opportunity, economic opportunity, reduced from 750 acres, we're giving it precedence, we're giving it an opportunity for the public to weigh in. Councilmembers here weren't even able to review the Capstone deal. And so I just want to understand, what is the direction? Because on April 11th, we didn't have the bandwidth.
You know, once again, as I will tell you, Mr. Taylor, that was a decision that, it was a timing thing. And once again, I think, you know, due to some of the complexities requiring a supermajority, you know, it was a timing thing. But once again, I think this Capstone thing has been on the radar for a couple of months now, and I respect, you know, kindly respect your opinion. But once again, what we're just asking the Planning Commission to do is to take a look at the feasibility and make recommendations, not only whether it would be with Project Wayne, but under a number of the other discussions that, you know, Jen had. That's all we're asking for, is an opinion from there so we can make a prudent decision going forward. Barbara?
Well, Planning Commission's legal responsibility is to provide us with a comprehensive plan. And we're beginning that process now. And since there is a very viable site for this one particular use, which we were told that there wasn't, but there is, I think that particular pressure is gone. We certainly don't want to offer a public site if there's private property available. But we do have, we did pay a lot of money for this plan, which specifically looked at the ITA and the uses, and the limiting factors, and what uses should be there and what shouldn't. So if we're going to update this plan, this took money, and it took a lot of time with a lot of the public as participants. So are we asking the Planning Commission now to redo this? Is that what we're doing? Because that's what this did. It looked at the ITA, which was a very specific area, and updated that, the plan. And so if that's what we're asking the Planning Commission to do, that's, that's pretty expensive, and we're updating this plan. So is that what we're asking?
We're just asking for recommendations about an appropriate use, what we can do there. If perhaps, you know, Project Wayne can go there, but then again, we still have other needs that were identified as part of what we can do. Okay, Worth, and then Rosemary, and then Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, colleagues, for all of your input. I've thought a lot about this topic and this issue, and I very much agree with what Councilwoman Rouse went through on her comments here recently, just now, about balance and evaluating this site. But if there's another site in the city, I would also recommend that we ask our Department of Economic Development to present that site as soon as possible, because, and I love my seatmate, Mr. Council, uh, Ms. Because, and I love my seatmate, Mr. Count, Mr. Taylor, but in the world of economic development, this business has been waiting for our response and our direction. And so we owe it to them. And I'm sorry, but that's the world we, we're in right now. They'll go to another locality. This will diversify our economy. And having just gone through the, the budget process, with real estate revenues being our top resource of revenue to run the city, 86% of those revenues come from homeowners, 14% from commercial real estate. We need to increase the 14% to at least 20%. This one, I don't know where it will take us, if it, if we even got, got it. But we've got to focus on more economic development.
And, and if, you know-
Not expensive of the city, but at the same time, we've got a balance to keep this in, in mind.
And I truly respect what you said and, you know, Councilman Taylor said. But the thing is, if we can do things concurrently, we explore the possibility of another site, but concurrently-
Concurrently, yes.
You know, refer it to, and then find out what we can do.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think that could be a win-win.
I just need some clarity. I'm a little confused. Because I think whoever Project Wayne is, they can file with the Planning Commission. They don't need our permission to go file their plans. So what are we saying? Are we, are we, are we-
Yeah, Patrick has an answer to that.
Well, can I finish my question?
Okay.
So are-
My interruption, my apologies.
Are we saying that we need to vote on this, to ask them to explore the possibility? I'm not sure what we're-
Just a direction.
What we're asking for.
So, Mr. Mayor, and when we briefed council on this and closed, we were, come back in an open session, have a discussion for council to give us guidance and direction to, for the city to, because it's the city's land, to have the Planning Commission consider evaluating a rezoning effort from current zoning to industrial. So the conversation council's having now is to ask us staff to take the property that the council, the city owns, to the Planning Commission, for the Planning Commission to consider rezoning it, to give you an opinion on, a recommendation on rezoning it to industrial, to allow Project Wayne to sit there.
So the city would essentially, there's two ways. And what I, what I had thought we were talking about was the city as the owner, being the applicant for zoning change, which would then involve some presentation of some level of planning detail as to footprint and usage and drainage and proffers and that kind of thing, as opposed to just a general rezoning to industrial. Now, council could, you know, council can refer anything it chooses to planning. We've passed resolutions before to refer things like short-term rental uses to planning. You could, you could go that route, too. But frankly, once you go that route, if it's just a general rezoning, then the first thing that the Planning Commission do would be to look at consistency with the comprehensive plan and say, is it consistent or is it not? And that's probably as far as they would go. So I think going with the applica- directing staff to submit an application, I think, Mr. Mayor, is what you're talking about. That would allow the Planning Commission to see more detail and to give a better, more informed recommendation to you.
Okay. Jen?
So just to clarify, so if, if we don't do the zoning nudge to planning, can the applicant still put it forward? And are you saying planning will then use the existing plan and then say, well, the existing plan without any zoning change amendment, we can't consider it?
Well, the city, the city, because the city is the owner of the property, the city would have to be the applicant.
I see. Okay.
Yeah, Chris?
And based on, again, the presentation, Ms. Monica, in the environment, would that indicate that if we go in that direction, that we support potentially changing the zoning for economic development? Because I don't want to put my name on that right now.
Hey, Michael, do you have something?
Well, Mayor, I think this conversation, as well as some of the other conversations we've had here, are lacking in information. And, and the questions that Councilmember Schulman and Vice Mayor Wilson asked, I think, illustrate that point very well. And I guess what I'm confused about in this process is that we have process and procedure for a reason, to create a level playing field. And, and we don't always get it right. And historically, we haven't always gotten it right. I'm not, I'm not advancing that narrative. But my point is, a civil society lives by procedure and policy. And we have a procedure and policy in place. And either there's a deficiency in that policy, which is requiring additional conversation and consideration that we've been having, or we're doing it wrong, because we're potentially injecting bias and prejudice into something that we don't even know anything about yet. And my, I think what we need to do is rely on the process that has served every other applicant and let the information come out as part of the process. And if it's good for the community, then that will come out. And if it's not good for the community, that will be revealed in the process. And, you know, Mr. Schulman and Mr. Stiles went to law school, graduated, you know, have degrees in law. There's a class called civil procedure. And because process is critical to any healthy system. And so I think some of the conversations we're having about the merits, without all the information, is doing a disservice to the, to the process. And in doing a disservice to the process, we do a disservice to the public.
That's why, that's why we're having the conversation. Anybody else at this point?
Well, one thing I want to mention, the population, you know, our entire population, what percentage have come up out of the entire population not wanting this to happen? What percentage? Does it mean that from one district? Or do you have a mixture of others where those job opportunities or anything have weighed in? Do we have, you know, something that mentions how many people from District Four, District Seven, and so forth have come up? And like you mentioned, looking at its merits, it's important, and we don't know that part.
Yeah, Chris, the challenge, Dr. Ross Hammond, is if we balance the scale, so to speak, and we use the same criteria that we used in April, stakeholder group, which is Barbara's district, has overwhelmingly said what?
No.
No. Just like the stakeholder group at the Oceanfront, said we need a new plan. We haven't looked at the master plan for this street. And we decided that was enough. So does it now, now do we go all across the city and repol? It was good in April. There's not many people in Barbara's district that have come before us or emailed us, check your email, and said, please let Project Wayne go forth. It's been special interest. It's been the chamber. It's been this person, that person. And so I'm a little not confused, but conflicted. As Councilmember Lucio said, what is the standard process? And Barbara brings up a good point. Are we redoing the entire comprehensive plan? Because our plate's full. That's a big, heavy lift for staff.
I guess, you know, part of the dilemma is that, you know, when we have projects where, you know, the applicant doesn't want to be, for a number of reasons identified, get this stuff out. You know, so, okay, you know, once again, we're here in some direction and, you know, it's, this is a bit of a toughie. Well, I tell you what, at this point, you know, I think, once again, you know, you know, my concern is that, you know, we can very wind up with a divided council on this. So, you know, I think the recommendation originally was, and, you know, granted, you know, once again, this is a special type of, but once again, this also has an opportunity to be, you know, something that we could talk about in terms of when we develop strategic plans, how to handle this in the future. Okay? But once again, let me, let me just put it out for, you know, a sense of closure and everything. I think a lot of people, some for it, against it, for a number of reasons. Yeah, I think the recommendation was that we at least refer to the Planning Commission, you know, to evaluate, you know, you know, the potential of the change of zoning, you know, but once again, with, with, with the other considerations. Does anybody object to that at this point? Okay. Are we okay with moving forward, at least then, then take a look at it? Yes, I counted four nays.
So we just voted in close, I mean, in a-
No, you know, this is just for direction, correct? Is that kosher, Mark?
The evening we had the plant, the public hearing, I said, I hope if we're going to make any kind of recommendation, it will be in a forum where the public could, could have some comment. Of course, the public commented that night. I think overwhelmingly, you heard it. But, and that wasn't just my district, that was the whole city. But I think this is, this is taking that action by avoiding having to do something that night when they were all here. And I think that was not, we should do things.
Josh?
I want to, I want to just say that I, I respect, acknowledge, and appreciate everybody who came out that night to speak. And I respect, acknowledge, appreciate, just like we all do, the number of emails that we received, both for and against things. I think in this instance, we kind of put the cart before the horse. And we had, we had the public come out, charged about the potential for a development of an industrial nature, technically south of the green line, but also technically on a piece of property that was slated for a solid waste transfer station in that ITA plan. And I think when the folks came out to speak, they were speaking from a point and place of emotion and confusion. And people just did not have, we didn't have, as a council, all the information that, that we could even decide. Because, like I said, it, it was the cart before the horse. And we didn't allow the professionals that we have on our planning staff to go ahead and do their jobs and present recommendations to not only us, but analysis that the public could consume as well. And multiple public hearing processes. And I, I am somebody, like my colleague and the rest of you, who support economic development, but, but also understand that there is that, that balance. And we're going to have to strike a balance somehow. Land use is probably going to be the most, one of the most critical questions that we deal with as a city over the next 20, 30, 40 years. You know, we have, we have things and opportunities that pop up on the southern, you know, south, south central side of our city. And we, we're met with resistance. We, we have opportunities that pop up in and around neighborhoods and along major thoroughfares. Those are met with resistance. And if we're going to try and grow our tax base and alleviate the tax burden on residential taxpayers, if we're going to be respectful and acknowledging of our environmental challenges and seafowl rise and flooding and all of that, which I know and I think we should be. But, but I think, I think we have to move this through a process and give the public not just one opportunity to come out and voice their opinion based on not all the facts, but, but have multiple opportunities for people to come out and see what this is all about, so that we can also find out what it's all about. And I think that is doing the process justice. And the only, and yes, Councilmember Taylor, we do have a lot of things that have kind of stacked up. But the only way we take care of these is one at a time.
So then, in all due respect, let's go back and give everyone a fair shot. So is the precedent now that on a, an issue that there's not consensus, that we take a vote at the table, and if it's 7-4, we go in the direction of the seven? I mean, again, we're, we're back to the retreat.
Yeah.
And with all the lobbying I received, I told them, stop harassing me, not texting me. I'm not trying to be lobbied. So whatever we do today, just, I know it can be pessimistic.
But once again, you know, with the situation you brought up, I am, you know, hopefully I may be talking to the thing about, you know, making that availability.
And all due respect, but, Mayor, what we do today sets another precedent.
Yeah. But the thing is, too, I think this is also, as I said, I feel could be a learning opportunity to come up. Because once again, this is not a problem right now that is, this is not a sole factor, a problem we're going to have. This is going to be ongoing. And what I'm saying, this is perhaps the opportunity to include in a strategic plan. As we look at what we're doing, as we're running at a property, as we're looking at infill development and everything, to actually come up with a strategic plan that we can demonstrate to people, that we can do that. Okay, Mark, what, okay, Barbara?
May I ask, all right, it was one particular business, manufacturing, that we were considering this for. And I thought there was a time-sensitive thing with that individual. And I would hope that we're not sending the message to our economic development folks that they should not pursue looking at this other property that's available by a private-
No, I would say do it concurrently.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm sure if this applicant feels like he's going to be able to get a deal from the city, he's going to want that one first. So this is going to make it a little bit more difficult in there, because you know, the city kind of makes good deals that a private doesn't do. So I think we're, we're making some terrible precedent settings here. But I would hope that we're going to still value our private property owners who are interested in also selling their properties for uses, that we are not going to be competing with them. Because now we have all of this cheap land that we are going to be developing and we're going to be providing the infrastructure for. They don't have to go out to the private sector and compete with a property that has all the infrastructure, has the right use. So we're setting up a, a bad competition here. That's another precedent I think we're setting, and I think it's not good.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think, once again, this conversation, as, as Councilmember Schulman said, is putting the cart before the horse. We should rely on the process and let it all come out in the wash. And it will. So if it's good for the city, public will have a chance to evaluate the totality of the facts. And that's what pro- these processes are designed to do. And I think that's why the, what looked to me like the majority of the body was comfortable with, just moving it forward for discuss. It's not a saying, I'm certainly not comfortable to say absolutely yes, because I, I don't know enough.
Yeah.
Those facts come out as part of the process. So I'm not really sure what we were continuing, I mean, respectfully, I'm not sure what we're continuing to discuss. We have a process in place. That process has existed for decades. And we should, we should rely upon it to reveal the facts and to provide, you know, provide that information that we can, the public can use to determine if this is good or if it's not good for the city. We, we don't have those facts now, so we can't make that determination.
Yeah, Chris?
Councilmember Lucio, just help me reconcile what happens when we go outside the process. And it's not important.
I believe we should respect the process at all times.
And when we don't?
I've called it out, as you know.
Yeah. So-
I'm calling it out.
Mark, your advice in council at this point?
I think we're talking past each, I think the council may be talking past each other. There's, there's two different things here. There's a straight rezoning. Does the, does the Planning Commission recommend, and will the council consider a straight rezoning from whatever it is now to industrial?
Yeah.
And that, that the council, if the council wants the Planning Commission to consider that, then that would be the same thing you did with SDRs. You would have a resolution-
Okay.
-directing the, the, the Planning Commission to consider a specific question. Now, I will tell you, when they do that, the first thing they're going to do is they're going to look at the existing comp plan. And they're going to say, it's either consistent or it's inconsistent in these ways, and therefore our recommendation is X. And I don't know what the answer to that will be. But that's what they should, that's, that's what they will do. The other thing is essentially a conditional rezoning, which is initiated by a contract purchaser and/or the property owner- purchaser and/or the property owner to say, this is what I want to do on this specific piece of property, and planning commission, do you recommend it? And, I mean, how many conditional rezonings has this council considered?
Yeah.
But to do that conditional rezoning application, the buyer's got to be willing to come in and say, at least generally speaking, this is what I'm going to do, and this is what I'm going to build. There, the question would not necessarily be a public vote out at six o'clock, it would be a majority of this body saying to their staff, we want you to, we want you to pursue filing an application for that conditional rezoning. But those are two entirely different, both entirely appropriate processes, but they're very different things.
Yeah.
So I don't understand, it, it hasn't been come clear to me which of those you're asking us to do.
Would the latter situation be more appropriate, counsel? If, can you repeat that one?
Well, the, the issue that comes up with that is if there's another property out there now, then the contract buyer has to look at two different pieces of property and see which ones they're interested in moving forward with. Because it wouldn't make sense to have two.
Yeah.
I believe Ms. Henry said, and I don't know whether, I'm, I'm taking, I'm taking her out of work because she knows, I don't even know what the property is, but she says it's already appropriately zoned, so there wouldn't even.
I won't, I'm, maybe if it's not already zoned, it's in the area that is recommended for zoning for industrial, but it may not be industrial yet.
Let me, let me just, you know, you know, try to, you know, but once again, I really want to think about the integrity of the council. Would it be better initially to just explore the feasibility of the, of the alternative property? And, you know, I think once that is determined, you know, then we can make a course, and even if we can, you know, do, do this by council resolution.
Mr. Mayor, we could, um, we could have staff talk to the project representatives to speak to the private property owner about that property to see if it makes sense. I don't know where, where that'll go.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing, that's an unknown. But, you know, yeah, yeah, once again, you know, there is a concern about, you know, timing for, you know, number of reasons. But the other thing, I think improvement, if we want to get the yes on something, you know, the, as Jen was saying, the appropriate use of the property, you know, I think that might be the course to take first. Let's determine that and then, you know, find out, you know, the willingness of, you know, Project Wayne principles, you know, to be, you know, more engaged. Does that make sense?
So what I'm hearing is to just have staff, the economic development staff, reach to the Project Wayne partners about exploring the private opportunity.
Correct.
And the city necessarily won't have a role in that unless they, unless for some reason they feel that it doesn't work, then they may come back our way, or they may ask us for support.
At least, you know, let's get direction from them, you know, about the course. But, you know, one way or the other, we got to figure out an appropriate use. You know, for instance, if it is feasible to put a law enforcement training or a transfer station or whatever is appropriate, you know, I think that's basically what we want to do. Is that, is that acceptable to the body to, you know, move in that course?
I'm not, sorry, Mayor, could I, could I just?
Yeah.
As, as I understand it, I think what you're asking, what we said is, so we had this discussion and then the outcome is what the same as when we walked in?
Well, I'll tell you what, because, you know, once, you know, once again, I think, you know, certain, you know, questions kind of came up that, you know, but once again, it's, you know, I think Mark brings up a point, what are we going to ask planning commission to do? And then they might be prescribed to do a certain type thing based on, you know, the comp plan. That was the advice that we got from council.
Or to ask about a conditional rezoning.
Or to ask about a conditional rezoning.
Yeah, and my, just for, just make sure for clarity, my position has always been, we have a process in place, so we should follow the process.
Yeah. But, you know, once again, yes, Josh.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor Dyer, I, I don't even know if we can even answer this, but, I mean, what is the deal risk of us waiting two, three, however many weeks while, while this other potential opportunity that, I mean, we just found about, found out about right here, right now.
Yeah.
Gets vetted? And that, that is concerning to me because I, I, I saw the public hearing as, as important as it was, it was outside of the process, and I, I believe was somewhat of a distraction to us getting into a process. And I see this other opportunity is, is on the one hand, maybe a potential solution, and that's good. But I also see it as that, as it being a potential red herring. And I, and I'm concerned that we, we lose, we lose any and all potential if we, if we wait, so.
Patrick.
And not to, not to insert myself into your deliberations, but Ms. Henry made the point, I mean, for the, for the project partner, city land is probably more preferable for many reasons. Negotiate with a private property owners is probably less preferable than city land. There is a deal risk to that. I mean, they, they may feel that, they may feel that, that cost, and I don't know enough about it to say that there's going to be a significant issue with that, but they may feel that what's going on here and how this is being handled and addressed here, you know, have a certainty of how it's going to move forward, and they may make a choice to go elsewhere, you know, in the.
Yeah, that's, that's the risk we're going to take, folks.
I was going to say the same thing as Councilman Shulman and Manager Dehaney. I mean, why can't we pursue this through the process concurrently?
I, I, I tend to agree too.
Same thought.
Okay. Once again, does anybody object to having the concurrent process?
I do.
Same answer.
Will we ultimately need nine votes out of this? I mean, I, I guess that's, you know.
Yeah, at least we'll be going and we'll be, you know, given, you know, some, you know, direction back to be concurrent process. Okay?
So, so the direction given to the staff is to prepare a conditional zoning application for this property?
Is that correct, folks? Yep.
That's the seventh.
Okay. You know, let me just say, this was a tough one, but once again, you know, my sincere hope is that this is going to be, you know, part of a learning process that we're going to, this ain't going to be our first rodeo with this. And the thing is, if we can come out with that strategic plan that we can find concurrence on, you know, I think that's the way to go. Okay, thank you. Is there any other, yes?
I do. I'm sorry to have to ask you this. My forum is normally in Building 19, and we make the arrangements for a year, and we thought we had everything arranged for the year, but the registrar needs that building next week.
Special elections.
Before I have my forum. In the past, when the Building 19 was being remodeled, I think this was back in 2020, I would use the council chamber for my forum, and I am asking if I can do that again this time, or I thought this room might be big enough, but the Avengrid folks have asked to come, so I've got a feeling it may not be big enough.
You might need the big chamber. Just a thought. And they, they may have to open the windows in the gallery.
I think after this action, we may have some folks who are also interested in Project Wayne, so I may need the council chamber. So if I could use that next week.
I see no problem. Anybody, Mr. Dehaney, logistic problem?
It's council's and Amanda's chamber. I do whatever you all tell me, what Amanda tells me to do.
You can go anywhere and sit at the nearest seat.
I stand at the, down at the bottom.
Okay, good. Does anybody else have any other, you know, council comments and everything? Yes, Sabrina.
Parks After Dark, just would like to take a brief moment to say, bravo to the staff for the kickoff of Parks After Dark. It was, had a chance to go out for a bit, they had good food, fun, and you just saw folks out in the community enjoying the music, fellowship, and educational purposes. And I just, and I think in my comments to some of the folks who are out there, this is one of the most expeditious projects we've put forth. I've seen some things take a long time, go through the, to go through the process, but Parks After Dark, getting that program, getting information on it, getting the program voted on by council and then implementing it was very expeditious, and it was well executed from what I could see when I was there on Thursday. And for those who didn't get a chance to get out in terms of the community, it will be going on all summer, and it is especially wonderful for our youth. We saw dogs out as well. It was wonderful. So just wanted to say bravo and kudos to the staff for a well-executed event.
And, you know, Sabrina, thank you very much for that. And I think this was a, you know, council decision, you know, it was, it was an investment, but I think this investment is going to be the, you know, the template going forward about how, you know, we're, a community is defined by it helps those that need help, and I think this is a perfect example.
And this came out of the youth crime prevention task force with Pastor Daniels and Chief Severa. And Patrick sent me some pictures too, and it was going to be very important to gather the data to make sure that it's accomplishing what we want it to.
Okay, Michael, and then Amelia.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to share that the Human Rights Commission last week held their officer elections, and Sylvia Neera Strickland was elected as chair, Jamal Gunn was elected as vice chair. So I want to congratulate them on that, their election, thank them for their service. I also want to acknowledge and send my appreciation to Carla Heseltine, who served as chair, and to Heidi Daniels, who served as vice chair. Thank them for their service and, and wish them well in their continued service on the Human Rights Commission.
Amelia, and then Jen.
Yes, first of all, I'll be like Rocky, this Parks After Dark is in District Four. So thank you all, we're excited about it, and Patrick also sent me some pictures. I was away, you know, that weekend for family reasons, but definitely I'm looking forward to getting out there and enjoying it. Couple of other announcements I wanted to mention, the HRT, they're going to have free fairs to commemorate Juneteenth, and that's for all six cities that are involved with that. And they sent you all, they saw for a minute that I had those little buttons, and they have sent up, asked my, let's just say, agent office, they send you all gifts about the crawlies, about what, so if you pass out, they even have your names on them and so forth. No, you thought it was lunch, sorry.
I'll bring some sandwich.
We're waiting for a sandwich. But anyway, going on, I was able to go and visit the Tidewater Fiber Corporation for Recycling yesterday. They celebrated their 50th anniversary. I meant to mention last week about the death of Terry Jenkins, as she knows, she was one of our former directors for human services. No, there's no food. Next thing, I wanted to congratulate Kathy Warren on being appointed Director of Planning. You see, I was trying to catch her, but she may come back. Okay. I will. Thank you. She's a wonderful addition for us in that area. Last thing I have on this is Burton Station is going to do their grand ribbon cutting on June 27, 22 at 2:00. And you may see the Walmart in Town Center, which is part of my district. They're revamping, and we have an opening, Mayor, they're asking for you to come as well, and I'll come on June 30. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jen, and then Josh.
Real quick, so Minority Business Council had a retreat this past Friday at the Hive, and they also elected new officers, so Damon Watson, congratulations for being elected as chair. Ola Torres, who has formerly served as the chair, is now serving as the secretary, so I want to thank her for the work that she did with the council. Ed Hopper is vice chair, and Ward Valentine, no relation, is treasurer. So congratulations to them for, they worked on updating vision, admission statements, so we may be seeing some of those updates soon.
Hey, thank you. Josh, and then Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just congratulate the, the team that organized the North American Sand Soccer Championships this past weekend. I was able to, to go down with my family and check out what, I, I was surprised to find was a huge undertaking. I mean, it's like 60 plus blocks, they said somewhere north of 100,000 attendees over the, over the weekend. They have representatives from the men's and women's national beach soccer teams, and their coaches were here. And it was, it was just, it was a great atmosphere, and it was just one of the many reasons why, you know, people love coming here. I mean, just how unique is that? You know, a big soccer festival right on our beach, and it's, it's the largest one in the world. So we've something to be certainly very proud of. And the other, the other thing I wanted to maybe invite those of us who have partaken in the planning advisory task force meetings for the school rebuilds, maybe not this time, but next time, I'd, I'd love to hear from all of you during, you know, during this time of the meeting, perhaps, you know, some of your impressions and, and some of the, some of your thoughts and feelings about what you'd experienced, I guess, so far. So I know, me for one, I've enjoyed the, the meetings along with the community input, but seeing as how you can only go to so many meetings, I could only go to the ones for Princess Anne High School, so I'd be interested in hearing what y'all thought at a later time.
And thank you about the sand soccer of Worth, and I, we're, they're awesome. They honored the city for our participation. Thank you. Okay.
I do have one last one, I forgot. I was able to go to the active transportation advisory committee yesterday and saw that Amy Frostik, that she is retiring from her post in there, and it was so nice of you to send that service, five-year service pin. So I want to mention her and congratulate her on that.
Okay, Chris, did you have something?
Yes, I want to congratulate and recognize Cox High School's lacrosse team for winning their first class five regional championship. And then also the baseball team followed up and won state championship last week, so congratulations to the Falcons. And then also just, it is a citywide issue based on the emails. Thursday night, we are having that town hall in District Eight for the Catholic Charities' application for rezoning, and so we get a lot of feedback, so just want to make sure there has been a location change for the public. So if you go to St. Nicholas Catholic Church, there will be someone directing you to the Presbyterian Church, so just wanted to clarify that.
Hey, that's great. And once again, congratulations about the family addition.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Jen.
So quick, last comment, congratulations and happy last week of school to the teachers and the students. I am thinking about the parents who will then be thinking about their own summer, so all the best to, happy graduation to all the graduates, and yay for the last week of school. Yay.
A summer break for the faculty is CCC, TCC coming up, right? Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess and to a closed session pursuant to exemptions of the open meeting laws by Section 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Personnel matters, discussions, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A1. of any public body pursuant to section 2.237 11A1. And that's council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies. And number two, performance of, uh, council appointees. So I have a motion.
Go move it.
Second.
Councilmember Luci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henry? Councilmember Volta?
Aye.
Councilmember Ribbit?
Aye.
Councilmember Rossammon?
Aye.
Councilmember Morale?
Aye.
Councilmember Shulman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Five votes attended here. You serve about the closed session. We have council to the motion to recess.
Okay, we are returned.